Good afternoon and welcome to the recessed meeting of the Arlington County Board, the September meeting. We have a couple of proclamations that we're going to start with, and I'll begin with, we'll then go to urban agriculture. I know there are a couple of people who are with us eager for the urban agriculture proclamation, but I'll start with our Affordable Housing Awareness Month proclamation, a shared priority of all the members of the board. And we have a couple of recitals. I also want to call your attention to a few events that will be coming up over the coming month. So, whereas it's in the vision of Arlington County to ensure an economically, racially, ethnically, and culturally diverse, inclusive, and sustainable community, and whereas ongoing access to expanded affordable housing choices for our low and moderate income households and workers in the form of both rental and homeownership is fundamental to maintaining healthy neighborhoods and families, stabilizing our local workforce, and supporting equity by allowing our entire community to reap the benefits of Arlington's economic prosperity, the county board is, there's a couple of other recitals, the county board pursues the preservation and creation of affordable housing through ordinances, plans, site plans, approvals, publicly funded affordable housing programs, and other programs and policies. There's additional recitals regarding how important it is for us to be a caring community where all are important, and whereas the county is further focused on efforts to avoid eviction, displacement, and homelessness due to the COVID-19 pandemic, and whereas the county has adopted an affordable housing master plan that outlines goals, objectives, and policies to ensure an adequate supply of housing to meet the community's needs, enable housing, enable access to housing and services, and contribute to the community's sustainability, whereas the county initiated Housing Arlington in 2019 to pursue new and creative ways to expand the supply and diversity of housing in Arlington, and to increase and preserve Arlington's affordable housing stock. Now therefore, I, Matt DiFranti, Chair of the County Board of Arlington, Virginia, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2021 as Affordable Housing Awareness Month in Arlington County, and encourage all members of the county to join with the county board in striving for broad community understanding of the importance of affordable housing and housing affordability to our county's sustainability, reaffirming the benefits of affordable housing as a community value, and promoting affordable housing choices for all Arlingtonians. That's the proclamation. With that go several different events that I just want to call community members' attention to. October 14th, there's a Housing Matters Forum that will be virtual, and it will focus on affordable housing financing. October 19th, there's Regional Fair Housing and Equity Plan Discussion that will be a virtual meeting. It will be stakeholders in a focus group meeting from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. October 21st, there will be a public meeting, a virtual evening meeting, on regional fair housing and equity. That's an issue that's been brought to us by a number of community members, and our staff is taking a longer look. I know all members of the board have an interest in this issue. Fair housing is a critical issue, and it comes out of the redlining that we saw for decades and decades that is, has such, has had such negative impacts. So, there's a Live in Arlington Information Fair on October 23rd from 1:00 to 4:00 at Lubbock Run Community Center. There's also discussion of condominium initiative that I know Board Member Dorsey has raised recently, and the City of Alexandria is offering some opportunities there that will be part of what we put forward on our housing page. There are other opportunities for public review. There's the Missing Middle Housing Study Phase One Report. We're still in the initial stage, at the end of the first stage here, and we will, the county staff would like to share with you that the report is available online. It summarizes the public input that we have received, and it includes an analysis of what has been done and what needs to be done in the course of this study. County staff will hold a virtual Q&amp;A session on the draft report, September 28th at noon. So, want to make sure, call attention to people on that issue. There's also the Affordable Housing Master Plan Review, the Implementation Framework, which will be available in October. So, lots going on, on affordable housing, and in October Affordable Housing Month. We'll now turn to Board Member Dorsey for a proclamation, I believe, on National Preparedness Month.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and the month of September is National Preparedness Month, and in doing so, you have signed a proclamation, which I shall now read before tag teaming with Ms. Garvey on some helpful reminders about National Preparedness Month and preparedness in general. Whereas September 2021 is National Preparedness Month as declared by the Department of Homeland Security, and whereas NPM seeks to increase public awareness about the importance preparing for emergencies and to encourage individuals to be better prepared, and whereas preparedness goes beyond fire alarms, deadbolts, and extra food, and whereas Arlington County's Department of Public Safety Communications and Emergency Management, along with the Emergency Preparedness Advisory Commission, are encouraging Arlingtonians to prepare for emergencies in their homes, businesses, and schools, and whereas NPM is an opportunity for all residents and employees to prepare for emergencies, whereas Arlington County encourages residents to be informed about different threats, make an emergency supply kit, create a family emergency communications plan, and get involved in protecting our community, and whereas preparedness is everyone's responsibility. Now therefore, Matthew DiFranti, Chair of the County Board of Arlington, Virginia, does hereby proclaim the month of September 2021 as National Preparedness Month in our county, and urges all citizens to take steps to protect themselves and their loved ones by preparing for emergencies. So, with that, if we can put a few slides on the screen, if we have those. So, National Preparedness Month is, as stated, an initiative of the Department of Homeland Security, and the public facing accompaniment to this effort is ready.gov, that's R-E-A-D-Y.gov, which highlights all the ways in which federal government supports preparing for disasters and emergencies. They take many forms, many naturally occurring, many directly caused by human actions, but whenever these emergencies strike, they all have in common that they leave people who are unprepared, the level of stress and anxiety, and certainly vulnerable to the worst outcomes from disasters and emergencies. So, there are supports to help people with that, and an annual reminder via National Preparedness Month, which this year takes on as its overarching theme, that we should prepare to protect, and there are a series of events that are held week, or a series of themes, subthemes, week by week, to help support not only raising awareness, but giving people practical ideas about how they can be better prepared in the event that disaster strikes. So, the first week was all about how you actually make a plan, and their resources on ready.gov for businesses, for families, as well as ways for children to get involved in this work. Building a kit, a preparedness kit, which I think Ms. Garvey is going to talk about a little bit more. What really will you need? The types of things that can serve you, no matter what the situation is. And, you know, this week, or I'm sorry, last week, was all about how preparedness doesn't have to cost a lot. There are so many things that we can do to better situate ourselves to navigate through the emergency, and also to recover afterwards, that require little or no cost, but really just some advanced planning and forethought. And this week, teaching our youth, teaching children about preparedness, something that I intend to do in my own home, and hopefully people will take an opportunity, at least once every year, to, to, to think about emergency preparedness. And with that, our longstanding board articulator of the importance of this work, Ms. Garvey.
Thank you so much, Mr. Dorsey. Yeah, I've been doing this for a long time, and I love, every year, there's, there's more, there's websites and all of these things. This is great. I find that a lot of people, I don't know about how many of you out there, are going to check on each one of these and go to ready.gov and actually do this. Maybe, it would be really good if you would, but if you're not going to do that, there are just some real basics. And the first one I've found, having lived here through 9/11, multiple snowstorms, derachos here in Arlington, the first thing you really need is information. What's going on? Where can you get dry ice, perhaps? Can you drink the water? Maybe you can, maybe you can't. How do you get that information? Now, a lot of times, we use our devices, and we use these things, we've got our computers, but the power might be out. So, one of the first things for information I always recommend is, if you can, get one of these handy-dandy emergency radios. It has a solar battery, which I had fun, I put it outside to get it to work, and yeah, darn if it wasn't charging the solar battery. I got to watch it go. I even left it out one night when it rained, and realized the next morning, it still works. It's great. And if that's not working for you, there's a handy crank that you can crank, and you can see how it goes as you crank it. There is a connection in the, in this part to charge your phones. How many of us have been without power for a while, and then you, and the phones die, and you can't use your phones. And then you can also, there's, there's a handy-dandy light here. So, if you're going to do nothing else, get yourself a radio, if it's, you know, simpler, cheaper, battery operator, you put the batteries in, that's really great, so you can get information. That's really the first major thing that you're going to need in an emergency. And I think I have some helpful, yes. Sign up for Arlington Alert. You can sign up, you get these, I get them about traffic, which is always handy, but you can sign up and say what you want to get information about. I'm pretty sure, which we could check with our, our staff later, I'm pretty sure we've even got maybe reverse 911, so there's really major, this is liable to ring, and I think many of us have that for flood warnings now, which we all know now to really pay attention to. So, sign up for arlingtonalert.com though, if you can. And also, when you've got this radio, what are you going to listen to? It'd be really good to listen to, next slide please, I think, yeah, WERA 96.7, that's our local Arlington channel, that's Arlington Independent Media. They've got all kinds of fun shows, but in an emergency, they're our partners, and we will be putting out Arlington-specific information on this station. And I will tell you, I learned that on 9/11, driving home, past the Pentagon, trying to figure out what was going on and where I needed to go, and realizing I had no way to get that information on the car radio. I was listening to the same news broadcast my family was in various parts of the country. But we now have our own radio station, which is great. Now, another thing that's really good to have is water, and if you go onto that, those sites that Mr. Dorsey pointed out, which I did check out a little bit, one of them helps, a gallon of water for every member of your family. So, you're supposed to be ready for three days, and if you've got a family of four, as a lot of people do, three days, that's 12 gallons of water you're meant to be keeping. Oh my gosh, that's a lot, maybe too much to think about. These handy-dandy little potable water, Aquath for camping, they make safe, most water that's got natural contaminants. If it's chemical, that's something else. And again, you're listening to this to find out is it chemicals in the water you need to be worried about or not. This is really handy. It's not 12 gallons, but it will purify that much water if you've got other water sources. So, these are really handy to keep on hand. So, that's basically what you really, really need. You need information, you've got to be able to drink water pretty often. It's nice to have food, so store up maybe some canned foods, and then just make sure you've got a can opener, as we found in our office the other day, we found ourselves needing, we didn't have anything to open the can with. So, you should have, and not an electric one, right? Remember the power might be out, but those are, those are nice to haves. Another really nice to have is some little light source. A lot of us have these decorative little lights, they're nice, they just put on a little nightlight. Better that you've got, you know, something else. Finally, to really be comfortable, it's nice to have food that you can cook. So, I brought in, which this is a new, this is new to my repertoire that I bring. This is a little camping gas stove. It's a little single burner, you can get this sort of thing. Mr. Karantonos was delighted with my stove. Thank you for your interest in it. I bought this in 1973, when we took it to Africa with the Peace Corps, and it has brewed many a meal when we didn't have anything else, many coffees and toast and things here in Arlington. Power goes out. It still works. It's really handy. The only one thing you need to make sure you have, if you have that, is patches. So, part of the whole making a plan is to think things through just a little bit. That's really all you need to do. First, make sure you can get information, water. If you don't do anything else than that, please do that. I know it's just, there's a whole lot to think about, but if you can at least do information and water, you will be off to a really good start. And the more you want to think things through, the better. I think there might be a final slide, but maybe not. No, I think you, I think you showed that one. So, that's my, my annual little preparedness talk. It's great to do all of the major things, but if you don't do anything else, make sure you can get information if the power's out, if those routers aren't working, if the phones go down, which they did on 9/11, and make sure you've got a way to get drinkable water. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms.
Everybody stay safe.
Yes, absolutely. I believe there's recent information that one-third of Americans have been without power or threatened by some of the climate-related events, Hurricane Ida. So, thank you for that. Ms. Garvey, and we will go back to you with some interested residents for our urban agriculture proclamation, and I believe there's interest in a, in appropriately-distanced picture after that.
I would be happy to do that. So, that's great. I'm real pleased to do this on the liaison to the Friends of Urban Agriculture, and they do just great work. And I think we have Emily Landsman, Audrey Morris, and David Sacks with us. Is that right? It's always a little hard to tell behind the mask. It's great to have you with us today. Thank you for everything you're doing, and I am very pleased to read this proclamation. I won't read quite all of it, but I'm going to read most of it. It's pretty interesting. So, proclamation for Urban Agriculture Month. Whereas, agriculture plays an important role in Arlington, producing fresh local food on rooftops, indoors, and in gardens, and Arlington is a regional urban agricultural leader, creating jobs, and whereas, Arlington supports community gardens and other design elements of biophilic cities, bringing an immersive experience in nature to create an appreciation of natural processes and the importance of a healthy ecosystem, and supports the health of the Chesapeake Bay watershed, and whereas, Arlington Resiliency Planning, again, back to that resiliency, addresses food insecurity resulting from the coronavirus pandemic impacts, natural disasters, extreme climate events, and man-made emergencies, highlighting the importance of sustainable food systems, and addressing food security by a coordinated regional approach to growing, distributing, and accessing healthy food, and whereas, Arlington County has 10 farmers' markets that generate direct sales up to 2,000 customers each market day, while expanding job opportunities for local producers and providing gleaning for donation and matching SNAP benefits. And the county supports 391 community garden plots, including an ADA accessible space, and we collect yard and food waste now for composting. Our county libraries support gardeners through their collection. Educational programs and demonstration gardens and school gardens provide outdoor learning opportunities for our youth, and whereas, Virginia Cooperative Extension, commonly known as VCE, and its master gardener and master food volunteer programs provide extensive public education programs promoting nutritionists, excuse me, food, and whereas, Friends of Urban Agriculture promotes a fair, healthy food system, and advances the urban agriculture sector, including supporting school gardens and local gardeners, and gleaning opportunities at area farms to produce fresh produce for individuals and for local food pantries through the Plot Against Hunger program, and developing demonstration urban gardens in partnership with the county and local civic associations. Now therefore, Matt DiFranti, Chair of the Arlington County Board, Arlington, Virginia, does hereby proclaim October 2021 as Urban Agriculture Month in Arlington County, to educate residents as to the benefits and importance of healthy and sustainable food systems and urban agriculture programs in our community. So, it's great that we've got some folks here with us. So, how do we do, I can come down, or in fact, maybe you come here and we'll all, how are we going to work this? Somebody tell me how to do a proper distanced photo. Yes?
You want to come?
Okay.
Perfect.
Thank you so much for the support.
Sure, sure, happy to.
An event coming up, are we 10 days away from that, is that right?
Yes, that's right.
And how is the Plot Against Hunger?
Oh, it happens so good. The Glean Society is like, what's, over 7,000 pounds.
Oh, my God.
I think it's not.
Over 50 gardens working together, and I'm just really pleased to see the work that's happening together.
Yeah, and last year, but that's a lot of, it's awesome.
Thank you so much.
Pretty soon, we're going to need to do all that co-hosts.
So, in the middle, do it this way?
You have.
You should work with the center.
The chair.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to each of you very much. You're, as I said before, you're welcome to stay, but you do not have to. We, we have a couple of different items before us, and we're also trying to sort of stay on time with respect to, to, we've asked for a report, and we have two things that I'd like to do. What I propose is, I indicated that at 3:30 we would seek to address the Serrano, so without objection, colleagues, we will go ahead and ask to start that conversation now. Stephanie Hopkins, apologies. We'll come back to the Food Insecurity Working Group, and we've got a couple other things to fit in a little later this afternoon, of course, but we'll go now. that I'd like to do. What I propose is, I indicated that at 3:30, we would seek to address the Serrano. So without objection, colleagues, we will go ahead and ask to start that conversation now. Stephanie Hopkins, apologies. We'll come back to the Food Insecurity Working Group, and we've got a couple other things to fit in a little later this afternoon, of course. But we'll go now, I believe, we'll hear first from Ms. Valenzuela, I think, a couple of minutes, and then we will hear from interim CEO Susan Cunningham, and then we'll hear briefly with concluding remarks from, I think, Ms. Jackson. But let's start. We, I trust colleagues are aware, we've received a letter from our Housing Commission, which held a conversation, and last month, we had a conversation on this, where we wanted both to hear from tenants, but we also, and we also had some requests for once to, first time in a while, someone has said, please micromanage. And so, that's what we requested. But we'll start with Ms. Valenzuela. Go ahead.
I'm Janet Valenzuela, a community leader and advocate. I appreciate the opportunity to speak today. Thank you for all you are doing to make sure that residents live in healthy, safe conditions and are treated respectfully. You recognize that every resident of Arlington deserves to be treated with dignity. As our resident advocate teams hold you in an email update you early today, we welcome the long-needed repairs at Serrano's. Some problems remain, in particular with pipes and water leakage, mice, and non-functional conveytors in some units. This is very disruptive for the residents involved. We hope the county will continue to closely follow the work and do inspections to make sure that the repairs are effective. As we told Ms. Cunningham in a meeting on Friday, the longstanding problems with communication and disrespectful treatment of residents continue. On Sunday, when our group set up a table at the Serrano's to help residents write compensation letters, we heard more of the same concerns that we first heard three years ago. Some are listed and are updated today. I learned about another incident this morning, a resident who submitted a written notice on September 3 about multiple problems in her unit, and has yet to get any response from the office. We are talking about basic human rights here. No one should be asked to put up with dismissive, rude, disrespectful treatment that makes them feel like a problem to be fixed, rather than a human being. One resident was so traumatized at the Serrano's that she moved from Arlington after many years because she could only find AHC apartments available to meet her needs. Her son is now suffering significant mental health issues because of the sudden move away from the only hometown he had ever known. There are fundamental and systemic changes that need to be made at AHC. They included cultural competency and trauma-informed training for every AHC board member, employee, and contractor, as well as basic customer service training. We ask you to continue to hold the company accountable for making these changes. Right now, AHC is offering compensation to residents. Thank you for insisting on this. The residents have suffered a lot through no fault of their own. The September 13 AHC letter to residents talks in detail near the beginning about the process for resolving dispute claims. We are not sure what that suggested about AHC willingness to give fair compensation to residents. We ask that you stay on top of this process to help ensure residents get treated fairly. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Valenzuela. We appreciate your persistence. We also appreciate the specificity that you mentioned in this and prepared remarks. Really appreciate that. If you would stay close, we'll now hear from Ms. Cunningham, and then we'll have an opportunity for a resident to close. Thank you. Ms. Cunningham. And colleagues, we'll have an opportunity for questions after we hear from Ms. Cunningham.
Is that on?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Should be on. You may need to hold it close or turn it up a little. There you go.
Sure. All right. Well, good afternoon. Thank you for having me. I am Susan Cunningham. I am the interim CEO and president of AHC. And in my first eight weeks, I've been really laser-focused on making things right at the Serrano, in close partnership with our advocates, our residents, and the county staff as well. So first, I want to again apologize for, on behalf of our staff and board, for our failure in the past to measure up to our own standards, our own high standards at the Serrano. I want you to know that AHC, both individually and corporately, remains deeply committed to our mission of bringing affordable and mixed-income housing to life and helping individuals and communities thrive. So today, I wanted to briefly give you a quick update on the progress against those three priority areas I shared with you on day two and a half, I think, back in July. So, our first priority remains ensuring that all residents enjoy a comfortable and healthy and welcoming home, especially those who were most affected by the disruptions at the Serrano. So on that score, we have been closely supporting Serrano residents interested in moving to a new home. That's been a joint effort with Arlington County DHS, Housing, ourselves, and a vendor. We've had 44 families who expressed interest in moving, and of those, about half have moved to other apartment communities and half to new Serrano apartments. 31 families chose in May or June to relocate temporarily to a hotel suite, and only one of those families remains in a hotel suite awaiting the purchase of a home in Prince George's County. And I do want to note that Ann Venizia and I are planning to come back as soon as that family is out of the hotel and in their permanent home, to document and finalize these costs later this fall. So stay tuned. In addition, throughout the COVID crisis, our Resident Services team has been working closely with all residents in our communities, including 56 families at the Serrano, who have accessed over half a million dollars in rental assistance, and some of those are also some of the families most impacted. We've also provided a one-time credit towards July rent for all residents of the Serrano, regardless of their housing choices. And then, Ms. Valenzuela mentioned we've recently launched a voluntary claims process to help residents, especially those who don't have renters insurance, which is the vast majority, to submit any damage or rent abatement claims that they would like to make to AHC. We've outlined with the input and support of the advocates, two different non-binding resolution options. One is a kind of insurance adjuster type, and the other is more of a hands-on mediation type. That information's been shared with residents in written form in three languages, hand-delivered letters, texts, emails. Another reminder went out this week, we have a resident meeting this week, and I will be there personally to share the details and answer questions. The deadline is October 4. As of 3 o'clock, I had not yet received a claim, though I think there is one coming today by hand to the Serrano. So I will keep you posted. And again, I really want to give a shout out to our partners at NAACP and VOICE and Bugata. VOICE took the time Friday, or Sunday, and will again next week to be on-site and make sure that anyone who didn't feel comfortable asking a question yet has a chance to do so. And I think as we go through all of the continued work at the Serrano, we're really focused on lessons learned. And I think one lesson learned in that supporting of the most impacted residents is that we have way too many people who don't have renters insurance, and Virginia law is not very supportive in the event of any damage inside your unit, regardless of fault. And so, I think as a community, we want to think about how do we support our most vulnerable residents and make sure that that small but significant expense of, call it $100 a year, may be able to be covered in some fashions. Come back to that. Our second priority was around phasing physical improvements, and we are continuing to make many near-term improvements in the building, as well as recently, we have now launched the Pre-Development Team, who will be responsible for coming up with a comprehensive renovation plan, options, and working with residents to bring that to life. On pests, we've made really very strong progress, and if you're lucky, Mr. Dorsey will share more of that, because he listened in to one of our calls. We have happily moved from below-average to average in terms of pest activity in the building. And we continue working really closely with our vendor, but also with our residents, on prevention strategies as well as treatment strategies. And we're kind of down to where there's about three apartments that seem to be the, that need the most work. Secondly, air quality. So the county's own testing identified that there were no systemic air quality issues in the building, no airborne asbestos, and no observed lead paint. We will do continue our preventative maintenance, catch-up, and unit-specific repairs in conjunction with the county's inspections to further improve air quality in the building. And importantly, part of that includes disruption for about two dozen families who will be phased through temporary relocation of a week or two, or maybe three in a couple cases, into the furnished hospitality suites on-site, so that we can do, actually open their walls and abate the asbestos in those walls while we repair a condensation on cooling pipes. The third area, as Ms. Valenzuela mentioned, is plumbing repairs. And one of the things, this is an area of continued disruption as well, so I want to make sure that it's clear. The design of this building from the '60s included what's called tiers of apartments. So if, unlike at your house where you just go turn the valve off when you want to fix the leaking sink, we have to turn off six or seven apartments at a time. So while we're working with a plumbing contractor to see if it makes sense to make any modifications before the full renovation, in the meantime, we have just worked on communicating closely to our residents, you know, that they're in that tier, that it'll be off for an hour or two if the faucet repair doesn't go well, or maybe 10 minutes if it does. But that is a disruption to residents. I just want you to know that. We are logging it, and we are working with residents to understand it. We notify them by text and/or paper notices. And then to minimize the inconvenience when it's not an emergency, we schedule off-peak hours, so it's not interrupting showers and meals. We have alternate toilet facilities, and we also have bottled water available. And then finally, we are caught up on the inspections with Arlington County. We're at 98% of those resolved and passed at this point, and looking forward to moving on from that. Our third priority was improving communication, trust, and partnership. And we know that this is really the key to making sure that our residents feel at home, and that they know their voices are heard at AHC properties. We've made some good progress these last eight weeks and across the year, but we definitely have more to do here. One thing we've done at the Serrano that has received very, very positive feedback is we've launched the text messaging tool. About 85% of resident households are now enrolled in that. And, you know, if it's your water being shut off for an hour because your neighbor's sink is leaking, or it's a new pest control company or something, or a resident meeting coming up, you'll get a message in Spanish and in English. And I think we've been running about three or four messages a week, which I thought might be annoying, but people are pretty happy with it overall so far. In addition, we're having a number of live conversations. Briefly, they were in-person and live, which was delightful. Many of them are moving back to Zoom, given the Delta variant issues. But that includes monthly resident meetings, which have professional English-to-Spanish translation. Those are regularly scheduled now, the fourth Thursday of every month, so the one coming up this week. In addition, we have been conducting focus groups from our Resident Services team, both in English and in Spanish. And Ms. Valenzuela and I talked about last week about piloting some CEO office hours. I've been on-site quite a bit, but we were going to just advertise to residents that there's like a specific time every week for October, where if they have a question or a concern, they can come, and we'll work on translation for that as well. And then finally, we are doing third-party surveys to continue to collect resident feedback anonymously. You know, those are showing some pretty good progress, including friendliness of office and maintenance staff being like a 4.3 out of 5, which is great. About a 4 out of 5, you know, 80% likelihood of renewing leases, which again, is pretty good in this region. And then finally, we continue to coordinate closely with the tenant advocates and the county staff. And I really need to thank everyone on your staff and the advocates and my staff for bringing me up to speed. I probably do know 30 times more than I knew last time I sat here, but there's still a great deal to learn, and it's been a fast onboarding. I am meeting with the advocates at least twice a month. I think we're about to move to sort of a regular schedule for that. Ann Venizia and I continue to meet weekly. The joint DHS, Housing, and AHC team meets as needed to help the final moves, and that program is wrapping up. And then, I've been working with your commissions and look forward to doing more so as the subcommittee and lesson learned moves forward. So finally, I just wanted to give you a quick update also on the things we're doing to strengthen AHC leadership and our governance. Our national search for a CEO is now underway, and we've already received some really spectacular candidates. Our diversity and equity and inclusion efforts are ongoing, and as Ms. Venezuela mentioned, we are talking with many of our advocate partners and several other specialists about how can we expand and really be a leader in intercultural communications and trauma-informed practices. We have some of that on staff and have some training already, but we are looking to expand that. And we simply want every resident to feel truly at home in our communities, and also everyone visiting our communities or working in our communities, to share a deep respect for one another and have the tools to do so. Our board continues to meet weekly during this transition time and is very actively involved. And finally, our new AHC board members will begin their terms in October, and that will include two residents from AHC communities. We had over 40 residents expressing interest in joining the board. As of last week, there may be some more coming in. So that's just really exciting, that folks are excited about that, and we are eager to have those voices and others in sort of a breadth of skills and backgrounds and perspectives joining the board this fall. And with that, I'll wrap up and leave you to questions.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham and Ms. Valenzuela both for your comments. We'll hear a bit more from additional resident, but first, questions. And I'll start just on a very tactical, the hospitality units. I know that making sure that there was broadband available for those was an issue this past week, so just, that is, as you go forward with the additional water items, that's something that occurred to me.
And that is turned on. So cable and internet are on in all three now.
Great. And I'm open to colleagues. Mr. Dorsey, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will ask about the renters' insurance ideas that you have. I'm not exactly, I used to be current on Virginia residential landlord-tenant law, but it's my recollection that you could require your tenants to have renters' insurance, but understanding that even a $15 average bill could be a stretch for some families. I can understand why you haven't necessarily required it, but I also remember that you could provide a form of insurance, damage insurance, on behalf of your tenants, that's sort of part of the rent, basically, to allow for ease of budgeting and might provide some efficiencies with buying power. Is that a route that AHC has explored?
We have explored it a little bit, and we could continue to do so. It is a cost, though, and it basically goes against your utilities. So it does change the cost of your rental.
Right. And do you know, like, on the landlord side, how much of an additional incremental cost that is? In my mind, I could conceive of some idea where it would be a little cheaper than a tenant getting insurance on their own?
Yeah, it's about, there is some pooling that's done, because this is an issue that others have explored. I haven't pushed all the numbers to the very end, but the initial requests I put in kind of came back with 100 to 120, regardless, kind of, per year.
Got it. Okay. So about the same, really, as renters' insurance?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's the same. Those insurers are pretty good at actually just looking at the risk and passing it through.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dorsey. Ms. Crystal?
Thank you very much. I wanted to talk a little bit about
Those insurers are pretty good at actually just looking at the risk and passing it through.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dorsey. Ms. Crystal?
Thank you very much. I wanted to talk a little bit about communication and how the channels of communication that I know, Ms. Cunningham, you have worked very hard to establish with resident advocates and that resident advocates and tenant representatives have worked very hard to maintain and extend with you, how that can be, how we can ensure that that is sufficiently suffusing through the organization. And I'm thinking about, you know, Ms. Valenzuela's comments and of course, the comments we've also received just today from Ms. Green that she referenced, that I know you've seen as well or been made aware of, you know, there are continuing issues with communications between frontline staff at the Serrano and residents. I know that you personally have worked very hard and have been met halfway in that, right, to establish those lines of communication, but, and to establish, I appreciate too, your sharing the text message, which I think we know, one of the things I remember learning from Ms. Valenzuela years ago, actually, was knowing that WhatsApp is often the best way to communicate with folks. And I'm glad to hear those efforts. But I suppose I'm not entirely surprised, given that sort of historical challenges, that things persist, like, for example, tenants showing up at the office and even though they're supposed to be Spanish speakers, they aren't. You know, the other examples, Ms. Green and Chad have folks, you know, being told to come meet with a particular person and then that person's not available and so forth. And just because these are the things that a tenant of the Serrano is going to experience on the front lines, it's so important to get them right. You know, I don't know that there's much you can comment on with regard to a particular incident, but could you give us some insight into when and as you and your colleagues learn about these incidents, when it's brought to your attention, how you're handling them, steps you're taking systemically to ensure that the people who are AHC's representatives, which are often Drucker and Falkstaff, you know, really are responding with the same level of intentionality to communication that you, as AHC's acting CEO, are also bringing?
Yeah, so I think it's a work in progress, like many things. Certainly, whenever there is an allegation and whether it's verbal or shared via email often, that is passed on to the frontline staff regardless of whether it is our own management company or our partner management companies like Drucker and Falk. It is also passed up the chain to their manager and up above. We have weekly meetings for the Serrano, the excellence team at Serrano, and that includes all the way up the chain to me and all the way up the chain to the deputy to CEO for the management company at Drucker and Falk. So we're doing constant problem solving there. And again, you know, that's a, that's a new relationship at Serrano, as you know well that they began in February, so we're still working through that. And I would also say, just to, I did, in my first couple of weeks back in July, a walk back with several of the advocates who had been present across many years to understand what some of the allegations had been across time. And so we recorded all of that, checked each and every one of them, both those under AHC management and under Drucker and Falk, and did a full investigation to pull down through that. So I think we are, we're getting better at making sure that information is shared. There are still humans involved and all of us, all of us humans are going through a lot of trauma right now. One of the key folks at the property from the Drucker and Falk team lost a second COVID, a second sibling to COVID last week or two weeks ago. So there's sort of that trauma reverberating as well, which, you know, we're working hard to buffer, but sometimes it breaks through. So we are retraining continuously. We are, you know, taking treats and taking care of humans and we are intervening when we, when we hear something not quite going well. There's some structural pieces and we had a great conversation last week with one of the, the resident who is the very first to go through the relocation to the hospitality suite while their, while their complicated repair is being done. And she was just wonderful about saying, I want all these lessons learned to be wrapped into for the next people going through, which is exactly right. And so one piece of that is, you know, upfront, having a very explicit, these are the things that are getting done, here's when they're supposed to get done, but there's some flexibility, here's when you can go back into the apartment, when you can't for your own safety, and we'll translate that as well if needed for families. So I think those kinds of pieces, we'll get better at them as we go and having the advocates and our residents really there with us is what will make us better.
Okay. I appreciate that. And I appreciate the attention to trying to resolve these issues systemically because I imagine those are, rather than treating each incident of a frontline customer service employee or Drucker and Falk employee failing to live up to the standards of customer service, you know, treating those as one-off incidents is probably going to be less effective than figuring out where there are patterns. So I, I'm glad that continues to be an area of prioritization. You know, I actually, I'm not sure, Mr. Chair, because we have the virtual meeting, is our staff with us? Do we have housing staff with us? Or if we have questions for them, we should hold those for a later time?
We, I believe we do have our housing staff with us. We also, you know, a couple of questions, but I think there's also desire in conversations with our housing staff just to, if you got a couple, go for it, but let's-
Otherwise, take them offline.
Yeah, we can also work them offline, too.
That's fine. I'm happy to do that. And I'm trying to get my arms around our ongoing inspections relationship with the Serrano. I'm really pleased, I mean, we've talked before about among the most important things is, was for AHC to work through that list of unit repairs and knowing that that's, the failed inspections are now, have all been remediated is really important. But certainly, we have heard from Ms. Green and others that, you know, there are going to be ongoing issues that raise concern and they'd like to know what the county's inspection plan is going forward. I have less of a bead on that than I might like, and so I'm happy to follow up with our staff offline and can stay in communication with both Ms. Cunningham and with Valenzuela, Ms. Green and others. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crystal. Appreciate the questions. Communication certainly is a big area of focus. Ms. Garvey?
Yeah, thank you. And I'm just going to follow up just a little bit on the topic that Ms. Crystal was really honing in on, which is that improved communications. I think that is the toughest one because it involves people, you know, pipes and things, you fix them, they stay there, but people are a very changeable sort of thing. I would be interested, you know, over time, to just get a little more information about the kind of, I mean, I think of it as sensitivity training, cross-cultural training. You know, those of us who have traveled and lived a long time, I've seen so many times where two people come and they're just talking completely cross-purposes because neither understands either the body language or just a lot of what's going on. And then everybody's upset, as you say, these are fraught times, and then it just kind of blows up. Whereas if there was a little more understanding of where people were coming from and why they were behaving the way they were, it would go better. But that's not easy to do. So I'd just be interested over time in learning a little bit more about that. We could talk about that a little offline because that might also be a bit of a model. I suspect this is an issue in many, many places.
Yeah, and I think, I think we're, we're working to build it as we go. I think Ms. Jackson may share with you, we've been talking about how do we have almost like a mediator at times? So back to your education experience, sort of get those teachable moments and learn from them either in a debrief or right there as they're happening in addition to the classroom learning and sort of all the, all the practices. But there's enough moments in a day in a building that there can be continual learnings. We just need to make that happen.
Do you know how many different countries are represented in your building?
I do not.
It would be interesting. I mean, I think there's probably a little mini UN going on.
Quite large.
And as I say, the cultures are so different and something that might be polite in one culture can actually be seen sort of as insulting in another culture. It's just really, really hard. So I'll just be interested to see how you continue to negotiate that and much appreciate the effort and the progress that's been made so far. Clearly, there's, there's a distance to go, but we've, we've come really a long way since July, I think. So thank you and everybody, the advocates, our staff. It's just, you know, been a full court press and I think we're starting to see some results. So thank you. Yeah, that's-
Thank you, Ms. Garvey. Mr. Carletonas?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, thank you to Ms. Valenzuela and Ms. Cunningham for coming today, for reporting back. It's, I try to be honest and to preface what I want to ask. I want to finish today's sessions with, with knowing where we are in the process. Are we in the middle? Are we in the last third? Are we in the final stretch? So ideally, I would really like to know when is Serrano going to be whole again? And, you know, all the problems resolved? If we have an idea of a, of a timeline for that? These are the first 90 days. I appreciate a lot your effort and the effort of the, of the advocates and everybody involved because this really took us, continues to take a village. But before we discuss that, so you, did I understand you correctly? At least I saw that in the reporting from our housing commission that did a thorough, thorough session on this. We have inspected, fully inspected about 176 units. And correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that Serrano has 280 in total. So there is still 100 to go, or what is the status of these?
I think that it might be better for Ann to answer that question if she's on. I can try.
Sure. I'm happy to speak to that. So we've actually inspected 221 units at the Serrano and the remaining units, we did offer an inspection to all residents who, who live at the Serrano, and so they had the option to participate or not. It was a voluntary participation. So, so again, of the 280 units, we had 221 that we were able to inspect.
Thank you, Ms. Venetia. That gives me an idea. But we intend to, to still complete the inspection everywhere, right? Okay.
So at, at the Serrano, we are still offering those, those inspections to residents who haven't had their unit inspected and would still like one. So we're still offering that. Our focus, though, is shifting a little bit to some of our other aging CAF properties. And so we're going to begin, hopefully this fall, a pretty large-scale inspections process that we'll have more details on in the coming weeks so that we can get out into some of these other properties and see what's going on at those and are there deferred maintenance concerns and things like that that need additional attention. So we'll continue to monitor, of course, the unit conditions at Serrano. We will continue to offer to residents unit inspections if they would like one. We'll continue to keep Serrano on our regular monitoring schedule. We're just expanding now to start looking at other properties that are considered aging in our portfolio.
Okay, thank you. So to get back to this room here, what I've heard from, from residents is that, well, yes, the improvements have been, are visible, you know, there are crews working, they're painting the places, they are mitigating some of the leaking pipes or the, you know, the condensation, et cetera. But still, to many people, this seems to be a little bit too haphazard or, you know, these are not durable improvements or durable repairs. Are you, do you have a follow-up regime on quality control and all the contractors that work in the Serrano? I understand that this is a, you know, multi, multi-people task and multi-actors task. So how do you-
We've done a lot of work on, you know, setting clear expectations with the Drucker and Falk team about quality control. John Welsh and Marlon Moore are here with us and they have both been on-site regularly doing walkthroughs, particularly with the more major renovations, right? So these ones where someone's relocating out or they've been in a hotel and they're coming back to make sure everything's tip-top. And I've, I've done a few of them as well when John wasn't available. So, yeah, I, I think you would see that we are getting better. We are not perfect and probably won't be, but there is definitely a commitment to quality control. They're, we're working to have follow-ups with, with residents while they're out of their unit, for instance, making sure that they have everything that they need. That's how the Comcast issue was resolved. So that's where we are.
Okay. And as a last piece, a follow-up on, on what Ms. Garvey and Ms. Crystal mentioned. So communication, to me, this is also the way we treat people and the way they feel treated. So it seems still to be a, I mean, Ms. Valenzuela asked for, you know, providing everybody in AHC or everybody, people facing in AHC, cultural competence, training, et cetera. Is that something that resonates with you? Do you see it?
Yeah, we've been talking with, with VOICE and NAACP and Bugata about that across the last couple of weeks. And it, we are working towards sort of a full curriculum for next year as well as a board curriculum as we bring that new board together and kind of gel them. So there were some ideas that were brought forward Friday about specific cultural communication programs at universities, and we'll reach out to those folks. And then, as I said, we have the trauma-informed practices expertise, some of that in-house, and that was already in motion to train.
Okay. Last but not least, the issue of compensation for losses. You had already some conversation with Mr. Dorsey about insurance or no insurance and, you know, the two approaches, et cetera. When I hear all this and I, you know, remember very well who lives in Serrano and what, what kind of barriers there are, all this is really tough for families that went through all this and they are still charged by COVID and a thousand other things. Isn't there a, an easier, more straightforward way to resolve that?
If you've got one, bring it forward. We had a number of conversations with the, the most affected residents and with all of the tenant advocates that have been involved, each of the four organizations. And there's, there's a difference of opinion and different goals. My goal was to make sure that we move as quickly as possible to get payment to residents so that they can close this chapter and move forward with their lives and to do so equitably. And so what you see in the process that, that has been shared with residents at that point is two different ends of the spectrum from the advocate conversation. So one is, it's just like an insurance claim, write it down, document whatever you have, narrative is fine, you don't have to have receipts necessarily, send it to a claims adjuster and they will make a decision and will write a check. The other is if your story is more complicated and you feel that that won't do it justice and you want to have a more hands-on process than a mediator that's mutually agreed to, agreed upon, will manage it, manage that conversation for us. So a little bit back to that, you know, mediation question in general. The other thing that we have done already was for everyone in the building to give that rent credit and then to do the improvements that are happening. But there's a real tight rope, tightrope walk of making sure we're both equitable and fair. And it is, we don't want to just give more to those that did feel comfortable speaking up. We want to make sure that we are supporting all residents and encouraging them to speak up.
I lived once in a, in a block that caught fire. So there were a lot of issues and a not very cooperative landlord. So the city appointed, because this was a place where the city appointed, the city appointed a advocate, a, you know, a tenant's ombuds-
Yeah.
-woman in this case. And this went very fast.
Yeah.
Nobody got the right amount of money. Nobody got the right compensation, but everybody got attention and respect. And that was already, you know, three-quarters of the issue. The issues after that were, you know, polished later. But it was done in about three weeks and we are here three months after plus. So I really, I really ask AHC to really to, to, to think about that and do the right thing if they can. So-
Yeah, again, both of those options are available to residents and we encourage each resident to make the choice that works best for them.
Thank you, Mr. Carletonas. Ms. Cunningham, I do want to hear from second resident and before I offer just a couple of concluding comments, want to be efficient and focused. And so I believe it's, it's Ms. Jackson, is that correct? Come on up and I'd like to hear from you as well.
Thank you, first of all, for letting me speak today. I do want to first off by saying thank you to Susan. We are scheduled to meet in the near future to collaborate on some trauma-informed language, which I'm very familiar with. But I do sometimes feel like AHC sees our request for better living conditions as a little bit unreasonable. little bit unreasonable. And when it comes to respectable collaboration between residents and the AAC staff, that does not happen. I have transitioned into another AAC property. I was recently humiliated in the hallway office area of that, of the Apex Building. So all because the person that was working thought it was appropriate to yell at me. And when I inquired, I said, do you think that how you're addressing me is professional? She became louder. She actually had residents walking by and pointed them into the conversation. I was definitely humiliated, and I feel like with the residents on me, that she actually agreed with her. So in my mind, no, you're not singling me out, but what you're doing is inappropriate overall. So I do look forward to meeting with Susan to discuss those. I also wanted to address that, sorry, it would be beneficial, I believe, for AAC to, I looked on your website, to have some kind of core values, maybe implementing these core values within your training of your staff, along with the trauma-informed training. But I looked on the website, and they do say that you have a commitment to your communities that you serve is deep and ongoing. You take pride in developing quality properties that strengthen neighborhoods and increase property values. I think we all can agree that Serrano is not a quality property, and I'm unsure of how AAC strengthens neighborhoods. The staff is disrespectful, they're rude, and a lot of people missed out on things. I have missed out on, being a six-year resident at Serrano, I have missed out on things that I feel like I shouldn't have missed out on. So just in regards to the overall culture of AAC, I would definitely think that should be addressed and held a little bit more accountability on that part. And for me, having worked over 18 years with vulnerable populations that experience mental health concerns, domestic violence, sexual assault, homeless, substance abuse, I definitely have a stellar record for client rapport when it comes to any of my clients, even when they're in different programs. They reach out to me, so I'm very familiar with having a client rapport. I have found that it's true and tried to have respect, compassion, empathy, and empowerment as a foundation to how you work with people. AAC employees lack these very important social skills. It is also understood that the population comes to its own, it comes with its own set of challenges. I know that all residents aren't the ideal residents. I know that they're challenging at times. However, dignity and respect should always be present when interacting. So I look forward to collaborating with you to try to make this change across AAC. And I appreciate everyone speaking with me. And also, it's been, it's been brought to my attention that a lot of the residents haven't had the same feedback as far as getting the compensation and things if they moved out. So if they could, the residents who have moved out, who have experienced the things that myself and other residents have experienced, if they could, they could reach out to them all, so that would be, that would be great. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Jackson. So I'll just offer a couple of concluding comments. You can stay where you are. First, on the physical facilities, I heard your concerns, Ms. Valenzuela, about the mice, water units, and conveytors. At the moment, based in part on Mr. Burkey's report, but also what I see to this point, I feel like there has been micromanagement, and I believe there's some progress in the physical facilities. That's my impression. But I'm still, you know, the mice challenges, the conveytors, it's not easy, so I'll want to keep looking at it. To Mr. Karantopoulos's point, I think we're in the middle, not at the end. We're in the middle of this. So as far as accountability, want to continue to have conversations either in October, November, haven't decided firmly which one yet, but inclined to have something shorter in October, just to make sure we're keeping an eye on this. By far, Ms. Crystal identified communications. I think that is the key challenge. We've seen it again and again. We talked about cultural competency and trauma. I think there's been trauma over a period of time here. And so your opening sentence, Ms. Cunningham, of failure to live up to your own standards, I think that AHC has started as an organization is relevant, and I think about that. So that is relevant to the question of those who've moved to new properties. For me, I know staff has brought that to our attention, and I'm not seeking to fix every problem. But, and I know that some of this is a relationship between AHC and tenants, so, but it is relevant, it seems to me, if someone has gone through this for a year. I do think there are some forms of certainly trauma. I never will forget when I had a rat in my house, and mice is very different, but still a challenge. So I think there's more to do. I'm pleased with the micromanagement, candidly. I do think communication is just absolutely critical. Those are the items that I'd be looking to follow up with next month or the month after. And Ms. Green, Ms. Venetia, their concerns, as well as the advocates, we're going to be listening. You know that. I think there's been progress since July, but the desire for progress fast is strong, and I don't think we're at the end yet. So with that, I thank everyone for coming. Thank folks for speaking and answering and providing a ton, a lot of context, Ms. Cunningham and AHC leaders. And you're welcome to stay, but you do not. We will move now. I believe we have a presentation from our treasurer. But I do have one other question and concern, which is, so those who are here on the Serrano, you're certainly welcome to leave if you like. You can stay if you want to leave as well. But I know we have a number of other items this afternoon that we need to work through, and I wanted to hear, we both have our food insecurity working group. There are a number of other items we'll need to move through quickly. So I'll ask that our treasurer be brief, unless there are other concerns from colleagues. Go ahead.
I'm so sorry, Mr. Treasurer. I just, I thought we were getting to all the board reports before. I had the treasurer at the end. I have a person on the phone.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. That's very helpful to know. I will ask the treasurer's indulgence as we work through. Yeah. So what we'll do is, unless colleagues with their board reports, we do have one person on the line, and we'll go to our resolution from Ms. Crystal, and then we'll go to our treasurer's report, unless there are other concerns from colleagues. Okay. Thank you.
Thanks so much. I just want to be cognizant, we have someone who's with us, and I think we're going a little out of order for very good reasons this evening, but trying to get myself oriented. I'm bringing forward this afternoon, colleagues, a resolution for Arlington to join, along with a number of jurisdictions around the region, and I believe soon, if not already, with the Transportation Planning Board of the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments. Mr. Dorsey can characterize that accurately, accurately. In joining the Capital Trails Coalition. And I appreciate everybody bearing with me. The reason I'd like to do this is because we have a staff member for the Capital Trails Coalition on the phone with us, Ms. Stephanie Piperneau. In the event that anybody has questions about this regional effort, as well as the, I can provide, I think, the Arlington perspective, and in fact, we're all familiar with it. But I will be brief. We have a presentation of the resolution that our clerk can pull up that you all have seen. The piece that I want to highlight, of course, is why do this and what it is. And I think you can especially find that in our fourth recital, which really emphasizes the potential that represents, is represented by the Capital Trails Coalition for the entirety of the region. We know that a multi-use trail network supporting pedestrians, cyclists, and other users is really important to a lot of our goals locally in Arlington. But when we act regionally, it is in fact transformative. And so the Capital Trails Network, as envisioned, this system of multi-use trails, almost, largely rather, anyway, off-road, has the potential to connect 4 million people within the National Capital Region, putting it within a two-mile walk or ride to jobs, to business, to transit, to recreational opportunities. 4 million people, you can imagine the potential that that poses for greenhouse gas emissions reduction, public health, sustainability, and economic opportunity. The Capital Trails Coalition has completed, or excuse me, has identified a system or a set of priority projects by 2025, some of which implicate Arlington County. And I think we can be particularly proud of and enthusiastic about joining this coalition because many of these are projects that are very much already underway for us. In fact, just on Saturday, as part of our consent agenda, we approved a funding application for improvements to the Arlington Boulevard Trail. You all remember in our CIP, we gave some direction to begin studying a remaining piece of the Arlington Boulevard Trail, particularly that intersection near Glebe Road, which is a challenge for us right now. We recently applied for a federal raise grant for $15 million for an Arlington Cemetery wall trail shortly before our resource. We have completed the Washington Boulevard Trail Phase 2. So a number of these priority projects are very much underway in Arlington. There are a few in this list that are Arlington slash someone or other, right? For example, Arlington and the National Park Service. And so there are some cases in which our realization of these priority projects by 2025 will require us to partner and collaborate with other entities that control the majority right-of-way, and certainly to seek funding from a variety of sources. But our staff, I know, and this board has already demonstrated a commitment to doing it. So I would like to move forward this resolution that is summarized here for a vote. The, whereas recitals conclude with a resolution that Arlington County endorses and joins a growing coalition of cities, counties, and boards around the region in supporting the concept of completing the 40 projects of the Capital Trails Coalition Network by 2025 and the full network by 2030, if I have a second.
You do.
Great, thank you. And so as I said, I would be delighted to answer any questions if I haven't already exhausted everyone with why I think this is an exciting opportunity for Arlington. And again, I would just like to thank Stephanie Piperneau, who is with the Capital Trails Coalition and is available on the line if there are any questions about the region's efforts to realize this transformative potential project.
Thank you, Ms. Crystal. Ms. Piperneau, did you want to say a couple of words?
Yes, I think Board Member Crystal really summarized it well, but I just want to emphasize the great progress Arlington County is already making to complete these trail projects. And I also just want to highlight the fact that these projects are taken from existing approved plans. The coalition is not creating these projects out of thin air. So just really want to emphasize that these are projects that Arlington DES and the coalition work closely on, as well as other partners that Ms. Crystal already mentioned.
Thank you very much, Ms. Piperneau. You may not know, Ms. Crystal, we all probably got outreach on this. I was slower than I should have been, and you led us, and I'm happy to support this. And go ahead, Mr. Dorsey.
And I just wanted to add to that excellent background primer from Ms. Crystal. You know, back in 2013 or 14, I believe it was, the, what is the National Capital Trail Network was actually the brainchild of our former colleague, Jay Fazette, who, when he chaired the TPB, envisioned a bicycle Beltway. You know, probably looks a little bit different than what Jay envisioned now, but there's been really steady incremental progress towards this concept over the years. And in 2018, when this was included in the TPB's long-range aspirational plan, what really was lacking at that point, despite a soon endorsement from the Council of Governments of this in concept, was a way to take it from aspirational to reality. And what we're seeing here is a real focus, thanks to the network and the coalition, of really refining what is achievable soon and now, and what just needs a little bit of a push in order to get it into reality. So thank you, Ms. Crystal, for following and shepherding this work. And it's just really great to see something that was once kind of conceived of as this, oh, wouldn't it be great to actually, this is how it can be, reality. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Dorsey. And certainly, there are a number of other leaders who have been on this, Congressman Byer and so many others.
Our entire delegation.
Yes, as well as many of our Arlington delegations, so.
And many of us.
Sure. So I guess the question, unless there are any concluding comments, questions on the resolution, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? No. That resolution passes 5-0. Onto our next. I'm mindful that we have a number of staff here. I want to be, want to go next to our treasurer, but I also, if you need to take a moment, we're trying to move expeditiously for each of you who's kind enough to be here, but Ms. De La Pava. Just while you're setting up, I think it's Ms. Hopkins may be here remotely, or I'm mindful as well that you have two little ones that you need to tend to, so we'll come to you quickly as well. Go ahead, Ms. De La Pava, when you're ready.
Yes, it is. Fantastic.
Sure.
I'm sorry that took a minute. This technology stuff is getting more complicated. Thank you so much for inviting me here, Chairman Di Franti, members of the board, Mr. Schwartz, for me to give you this tax delinquency report for Arlington County for fiscal year 2021. As you may recall, I was here last year in November to give you this report. Normally, it is given in September. The interesting part about giving it in November was that we had already had our October 5th tax due date, so we knew exactly how big the mountain was that we had to climb. What we didn't know was how the economic circumstances of the global pandemic would play out. So I made a best, best guess effort at what we would end the year with on our delinquency rate. And I projected a 0.30% delinquency rate. Certainly, it was much higher than the year before. And in fact, it was the highest delinquency rate. I was projecting the highest delinquency rate from my tenure in 2014. I am thrilled to be able to tell you that we achieved a delinquency rate of 0.18%. And thank you for the audio. That was very good. I appreciate that. It was 40% below our projection, and it almost, almost meets our pre-pandemic 0.18%. If you actually took that percentage out one more decimal point, you would see that we are still slightly above, but we are really in the ballpark. And that, that is really good news for the county and for us. Graphically, I would like to show you the chart that I showed you last year. And you can see, for the total tax delinquencies, right after October 5th, we hit $14 million. And the dotted line is where we projected we would go over the year. The solid red line is where we went. And you can see that as of even early December, our compliance team was hard at work and substantially beating their goal. I think it is helpful at this point to go tax type by tax type. And if we start with vehicle taxes, you can see that, kind of surprisingly, it was not very much impacted by the pandemic. I don't know if you can see a difference between the 2020 and 2019, oops, 2019 lines, but they were virtually on top of each other. In 2021, we were higher than that, but we were even less than we were in 2018, which was good news for us. And we still managed to come in below last year, which was a real accomplishment. Now, when we move to business tangible tax, you see a whole different story. And we know that businesses were hard-hit by this pandemic. Many businesses have closed, and I will tell you, it is very, very difficult to collect taxes from closed businesses. taxes from closed businesses. I'm happy to report, though, that we reduced our delinquent levels by $80,000 over last year. We're still slightly above 2019, but we worked very hard at reducing that. Now, as you know, that real estate is the lion's share of both of our levy and our delinquencies. We had over $5 million of delinquencies last November. That is 2 million more than we have seen. Actually, we haven't seen delinquencies like this since the height of the Great Recession in 2011. With a lot of dedication and hard work, we ended the year $24,000 less in delinquencies than the year before. And I think that was a huge achievement. And I also want to remind you of a chart that I showed you last November, which was to show you where the delinquencies were across Arlington. And you can tell, they were all over. As a reminder, the blue dots were the residential delinquencies, and the little red triangles were the commercial delinquencies. That map, as of the end of our collection year, looks like this. So you can see in visual form how much progress we made. And that's really critical, because real estate taxes come every year. And when you get far behind, that's when it really can snowball on our taxpayers. And so this is a really critical show of not only the work we do and the help we give to taxpayers, but just how important it is that we get to that level at the end of a collection year. I'd also like to delve in a little and show you that last November, we talked about the difference between our commercial delinquencies and our residential delinquencies. Our commercial delinquencies were almost 40% of our total delinquencies. What we know about the pandemic, this is not really surprising, but what is an accomplishment is that that number is now below 7%. So we are making a lot of good progress. You might ask yourself, because I get asked all the time, how do we achieve these results? And I think it is helpful that we divide, in our minds at least, the different types of delinquents we have. There's the unintentional, there's the unable, and there's the unwilling. And we have different tools for each type of delinquent accounts that we come across. For the unintentional, I am sure that you would agree with me that an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. And we work very hard at prevention. I like to say that prevention is cap-plus service. Last year, we had 20,000 new cap accounts. What that enables us to do is send out even more email reminders before a due date. That's really important for the unintentional delinquent. We are also able, through cap, to set up automatic bank debits, where people ask us to go to their bank accounts and take the amounts out that are due on the due date, not one day before. And we do that for our taxpayers. This year, we had 14,000-plus accounts on automatic bank debit. That represents over $41 million that we get on the due date. Again, robo-calls, you know that real estate taxes, there's a penalty, a harsh penalty on real estate taxes, and it is very expensive for our taxpayers to accidentally miss that deadline. We send out, last year, we sent out 6,200 robo-calls. We wait until about three days before the deadline, and if we haven't received a payment, we give a robo-call. And to this day, I think it's the only robo-call that I have ever heard of where constituents call us and thank us for those robo-calls, because they know it has saved them a lot of money. We also get returned real estate bills and assessment letters from the Department of Real Estate Assessments. We actually individually work all those accounts, either re-mail the letter with instructions or email them to tell them how to update their addresses with the appropriate department. This is absolutely critical for us, because addresses are the lifeblood of the Treasurers' Prevention Program. It is much easier to forget a tax bill if you didn't get the bill. So we have prevention, but we also have to talk about convenience. Convenience and safety is definitely the name of the game. As we speak, we've got Treasurers' Office staff at Love or Run, our brand-new, beautiful community center, and they are taking payments this week, Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. We have absolutely gotten a very, very positive response from our taxpayers, and I think that they appreciate it. We actually took in over $100,000 just yesterday, on the first day. So that's good news for us and for them. Going on to the unable, this was the category of delinquency that I worried about the most last year. And we continued with our tap loans to our customers. We did 80 loans for $1.1 million last year. To put that in perspective, I think the year before was $265,000. John Marshall Bank deserves an incredible shout-out at this moment, because they reduced their origination fee from 10% to 5% last year, when our taxpayers were facing such uncertain economic times. Last year, we also did internal payment plans. We did 400 internal payment plans for over $600,000 for those taxpayers who were directly financially impacted by the global pandemic. And I think that was a great help. We managed, in this program, to prevent $1.7 million from going delinquent. And that's something to be very, very proud of, I think. And then we come to the unwilling. I know you guys will not believe this, but there are people that actually don't want to pay their taxes. And for that delinquency, we continue to use the same tools and collection powers that we have always had: bank liens, wage garnishment, seizing property, court action. And we will continue to use those for those that are refusing to pay. Looking to the future, FY 2022, the October 5th due date is almost here. Hopefully, we will see a tapering of our delinquencies this year. I am planning on it. I have established a goal of 0.17%, and I feel absolutely confident that we can make that goal because of the Arlington County Treasurer staff. They work so hard at making these goals. Our operations teams work very diligently to prevent delinquencies, and our compliance team works hand-in-hand with our delinquent taxpayers to help them resolve those issues. As you well know, it is a team effort all across the county. And I would be remiss if I didn't talk about how much support I have gotten from the county departments. The Department of Environmental Services has helped us in setting up not only the satellite locations, but also downstairs in the atrium on the ground floor here, making it safer for our taxpayers that need to come in to pay. Parks and Recreation, they couldn't offer us a TJ this year, but Love or Run is a beautiful facility, and they worked hand-in-hand with us. The Sheriff's Office has always helped us with deputy support on our busiest days, and I can honestly tell you that we could not have done anything close to what we needed to do in the last two years without our Department of Technology Services. In closing, I'm going to say it again, real estate and car taxes due October 5th. The Treasurer's Office is more than just billing and collecting taxes. Success is in our service, and we are here to help. And with that, I will ask if anybody has any questions.
Thank you, Ms. DeLaPava. 0.018 this year is quite an accomplishment. And you said you'd tell a story, and you'd do it briefly, and you did both, which really appreciate. But in the story is so many people who are recovering in their businesses, and all those dots that are gone this year is part of our economic recovery. Saturday, we passed small business grants of $10,000 up to $2 million. So this is an important piece of work, but just a big thank you for your work, and there's a lot that was done there. Ms. Garvey.
Yeah, I'll just add my thank you. I mean, I will say, every time I call your office, because every now and then I've got things, and they're so helpful, they really are. They don't always know who I am. Sometimes they figure it out, because I have a different, you know, legal name. But that's just great. And I think I've probably said this every year. I mean, I think the work you do with the unaware and the unable is just huge about who we are as a community. It really is great. So thank you. We're getting a little spoiled. You kind of come, I mean, every year, you come with these wonder, and we're just kind of, oh, yes, it's the treasurer again, everything's great. But behind that goes an incredible amount of work. So thank you so very much again. You keep us going, we need it.
I can honestly say it's my pleasure.
Yes. And we've heard it from each of us, would want to deliver lengthier heartfelt remarks than perhaps everyone might pine to listen to, but it's so important. And thank you, not just to you, but all of your team. I'll never forget seeing your team and how hard they're working. So a big thank you for the report, and here's to 0.017 next year, if you can get there. Thank you.
See you then. Bye-bye.
Okay, next. We have an item where I believe, I don't know, Madam Clerk, if Kelly Davis and Caroline Elpers are in the room or not?
I believe, no, they're not.
Okay, so we'll just try and take care of this relatively quickly. We have for our consideration two animal control officers. So I will move the appointment of Ms. Kelly Davis and Ms. Caroline Elpers to be animal control officers for Arlington County. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? No. Any opposed say no? And none having said so, 5-0, that passes. Congratulations to Ms. Davis and Ms. Elpers. We have a number of other items, but we have been having patiently Ms. Stephanie Hopkins with a report on food insecurity. And Ms. Hopkins, if you are here remotely, I think brevity is also a good piece of the report. This is deeply heartfelt for me and many of us on the board, but if you are here, would you go ahead, please?
Hello, everybody. My name is Stephanie Hopkins. I'm the Food Security Coordinator at Arlington DHS, and I have some updates about food security. The next slide, please. So the Food Security Task Force kicked off in 2021 under the direction of Chair Matt DiFranti, with the support of all of the county board members. It has 28 members representing charitable food providers, DHS, Arlington Public Schools, including a number of other stakeholders, including two residents that are participants in food security resources. We'll be together for 12 to 18 months, and we're looking at community assets and needs, analyzing available data with the goal of coming up with a food security strategic plan at the end. One of the components, next slide, please. One of the components is we're partnering with the Urban Institute to do a food security study. The study will have two main components. One will be a mapped analysis, looking at where high need and low access to food intersect with a layer of racial equity and public transportation as well. And then the second component is a survey to a random sample of residents in 22203, 4, and 6, with follow-up interviews that will help us get a sense of what the lived experience of food insecurity is in Arlington County. And we expect those results in February 2020. Next slide. September is Hunger Action Month, which is part of why I'm here with you today. It's a great opportunity to learn about food insecurity and do something about it. We're blessed in this region that the Smithsonian Anacostia Community Museum has a new exhibit on food insecurity called "Food for the People: Eating and Activism in Greater Washington." It's available until next September. So I'm working with the task force to plan a field trip at some point this year. But there are lots of other ways that you can support in the community. Next slide. There are lots of organizations that provide food assistance. I'm sure you know of AFAC, but this whole list represents some of the smaller players as well. And so, you know, of course, you can donate. Donating lets these organizations purchase the things that they need, which is sometimes fresh produce, sometimes it's other supplies. You can volunteer, or you can donate. Some of these organizations accept food, some accept grocery bags, some accept gift cards. It all depends on what they're working with. Next slide. So with the pandemic, there have been lots of changes with the USDA, but one of the most exciting is that the USDA issued a waiver that allows all school districts to offer free meals for all students. So it's free breakfast and free lunch for all students, regardless of their family income. The USDA also just revised the Thrifty Food Plan, which is the formula that's used to determine how much SNAP benefits each household receives. And this is resulting in each household receiving about $36 extra dollars in benefits per member per month. Next slide. This year, again, the Public Library partnered with AFAC for their Summer Reading Challenge, and the Friends of the Public Library donated $1 for each participant in the Summer Reading Challenge, and they donated over $4,500 to AFAC for this year. Other highlights from nonprofits, next slide, is that AFAC has just restarted their evening hours. So they're open Monday through Saturday mornings, but now also Thursday evenings, which was a time slot they discontinued at the beginning of the pandemic. So it's an exciting opportunity for residents to have that flexibility. Another nonprofit that's based in Arlington, La Cucina VA, provides a culinary training program to residents, which gives them skills to work in restaurant kitchens or other professional kitchens. They get culinary training certifications and paid internships. They just had a new cohort that started yesterday. Excellent. There we go. I've been collecting data from all of the food providers to give us a picture of what things look like now compared to the height of the pandemic and pre-pandemic. So these numbers are looking at total visits to a food provider. So that means every time some households went to AFAC, or Our Lady Queen of Peace, or any of the food providers, not including school meals. So in January 2020, we saw about 10,000 visits per month. Then, with the start of the pandemic, we saw a huge increase in need, but also a huge increase in new programs and providers. So some existing programs had new programming, some organizations that didn't use to provide food began providing food. And then we saw a spike in the fall. In November 2020, we had about 19,000 visits per month. Over the spring, the numbers consistently, across most providers, started to decline, and now we're fairly steady at about 14,000 visits per month. So still elevated, but not quite at the high that we were last year. So, still elevated, but not quite at the high that we were last year. And another program I want to highlight is a relationship with DHS's Aging and Disability Services Division and Fresh Farm. They've held a couple of pop-up farmers markets at the low-income senior housing sites. So, these photos are from an event at Culpeper Gardens in August. It's an opportunity for residents to use their Senior Farmers Market Nutrition Program vouchers, which give them $45 to spend at farmers markets throughout the year. So, bringing this market to their building meant that they didn't have to travel to buy fresh produce. It was such a success that we plan on doing another event at Culpeper in October. And also with seniors, the Social Senior Plus Cafe, which is the Senior Congregate Meals Program run by Department of Parks and Rec, just recently opened their second location, and now they're serving about 68 seniors every week with lunch. And then what's next? So, looking forward, the task force is working on its assets and needs review. We're working with the Urban Institute. I'm working on developing a data dashboard that takes snapshots of data from different programs and putting it all in one place. I'm working with the food assistance providers to create a community of practice, so they have a place where they can problem-solve and share ideas and generally work together. And then we'll be working on developing our strategy proposal and associated budget and an implementation plan for, to round out the task force. I tried to be as efficient as I could. Does anyone have any questions?
Ms. Garvey, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Just one question, Ms. Hopkins. The, you know, it was great that the federal government finally decided that when children in school were hungry, we should feed them and not worry about a lot of other things. Do you have a sense at all that that might continue? I assume there's some efforts in the Congress to just kind of make that the rule, when we have hungry children, we feed them.
Yeah, there's a lot of advocacy around it. I don't know how promising it is that it's really going to continue past this year. There is the, the child's nutrition program's reauthorization is up this year, so there's an opportunity for lobbying around that. I'm not super hopeful. It's possible, though.
Yep, thank you. All right, I was just kind of wondering what you were sort of sensing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garvey, and colleagues. I know there's interest in this. What I propose to do is we share the PowerPoint. I want to take a quick second to thank the manager and colleagues, because the work that Stephanie has been doing, has, Ms. Hopkins has been doing, has been excellent. We are working on it. Just because you don't hear about it in grand detail every meeting doesn't mean that we're not working away, and the working group is excellent. Urban Institute will be a good partner on this. So, we will, we will share the PowerPoint. Thanks to you, Ms. Hopkins, for both well-presented information and doing so succinctly and reading the room well. We will continue our work together on that, and we'll share the PowerPoint, and if colleagues have questions, feel free to engage with Ms. Hopkins offline. So, what I would like to do next is move quickly with the, Madam Clerk, with your help, to a brief, very brief, three-slide presentation on, with an update on strengthening trust with our immigrant community. Then we will, we will delay unless colleagues have objections. The appointments we'll do at the end of the evening after, after our colleagues who are in the audience have left. I don't think people are waiting in bated breath, but we will do those appointments later. But I wanted to speak briefly. Arlington County has a history of being, and our vision is welcoming and inclusive. And with respect to our immigrant residents and our immigrant communities, we have taken several steps in the past to affirm those values and put them into action. And so, we're taking another step today. You're going to see a framework. This is the beginning of a conversation about how we can work to bring all of the good work that we do across the county into a solid one place for a policy that will codify good practices, reaffirm some of our policies, and take some additional small steps that we think are very significant. So, if we could go to the next slide, I, sort of tracking that, I was not part of 2017, but colleagues, several colleagues, I watched your speeches affirming that we are a welcoming and inclusive place and that we, in 2017, and there's a resolution, there's information on our website that can, that points to our history and our inclusivity over the last decade-plus back to 2007. There are some additional steps that we want to take, and they're really in three areas, and I want to just turn to the next slide. And this will be our last slide, just describing the, at the top, the three bubbles are the areas that we will be seeking to move forward on. Access to public services. We do, are very inclusive in providing public services to all our residents regardless of immigrant status. We have to comply with federal and state law, but we want to make sure there's access to those public services. We want to take some additional steps with respect to law enforcement. That's a piece of what is going to be this strengthening trust and building trust effort. And then last, on that slide, is access to information. You see in the bottom right, there's a number of elements that are at stake involved in this. What does this mean? We will be sharing a two-page framework, and there'll be a short announcement of that that we'll be sending out this afternoon to start this process. For those listening, we are, we are going to set up a series of conversations over the coming weeks and months in order to put this next step into practice. And so, welcome, I don't know that colleagues would have comments at this stage, but I welcome them if you have them. But I would just want to reemphasize, we do a lot of things very well. We want to put them in one place. We want to codify, and then there's some additional steps we can take in those three areas that you'll see going forward. So, if I don't see any, yes, Mr. Dorsey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for introducing this initiative. I think any organization that's not willing to look at itself in the mirror is not an organization worth emulating, so I'm pleased that we are going to look inward and also engage the community to get their feedback on some of those key areas that you outlined. I do want to stress that for those of you who are just casually looking in, these are not areas that are currently unaddressed when it comes to Arlington being a welcoming and inclusive place for our immigrant neighbors and friends. However, often, in an effort to do what you think is the best thing, you may not necessarily have included everybody who can contribute to that conversation as part of your policymaking, as part of your policy implementation. So, it's a, it's a great opportunity to hear from people affected by these particular areas who may have ideas that, you know, were not a part of the initial policy development, more importantly, can help us figure out how we ensure that all of the things that we're doing, both presently and that may be improved as a result of this process, are known and understood by all those who are affected by them. You know, we've got a lot that's there, but I don't know if we've ever necessarily done a stress test to figure out whether it's reached out to all of the areas where it needs to. So, look forward to this happening, and thank you for introducing it.
Thank you, Mr. Dorsey. You framed up how, a key piece of this is communicating what we have been doing so it's, so more people know, and that's a key piece of what we're doing, but there are additional steps. We'll have this conversation. This is a start, sought to reach out to many individuals, and there'll be more information forthcoming in a draft two-page framework, and we'll want all stakeholders to have a chance to offer thoughts. So, with that, I will continue to seek if we can, I'm open to colleagues if it's critical to do board reports now, but I also mindful of our staff who's here and waiting, so I would be inclined, unless there's objection, to turn to the manager to start to hear his report and then come back to the two, the other two reports, if that's okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Karantopoulos, Ms. Garvey. Really appreciate it. And we'll turn to the manager now for a couple of different reports. Mr. Schwartz?
Yeah, I wish I could promise I'd be brief, but I can't make that promise. Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. There are several items I'm going to cover this afternoon. First is focus on our economic and fiscal outlook, and then I have an update for you on the American Rescue Plan Act as part of that presentation, and I think the board is going to discuss potential budget guidance with me. Also, I have with me today the Chief of Police and Deputy Chief, and also the Director and Deputy Director of the Department of Human Services to talk about some personnel issues and funding challenges there. And also, I have Elizabeth Hardy and Emily Garrett here to talk about the census results. And we have a update on where we are with COVID, which I think is very important. So, as to the economic and fiscal outlook like last year, I'm sharing a very preliminary look right now at the September board meeting about next year's budget. And that's a little bit earlier than we normally do, but considering the outlook that we have and discussions that we have upcoming on the American Rescue Plan, I thought it was important that we get this information out there now. So, I'm going to turn it over to Emily Hughes from the Department of Management and Finance, and she will give us an overview of the fiscal year 2023 budget outlook. Emily?
Ms. Hughes?
I think... You're muted.
You may be on mute. We know because each of us does it once per meeting.
Apologies. Thank you very much. I have a few slides to share about the county manager's fiscal 2023 budget outlook. So, as we look forward and begin to prepare for the FY 2023 budget, the good news is that we're better off fiscally than we were at this time last year. Some of the revenues are starting to recover, and we see continued strength in our residential real estate market. Also, at this time last year, we did not know the scale of the federal relief. The ARPA funding available to Arlington, together with other one-time funding sources, allowed us to balance the FY '22 budget without taking significant cuts that would impact services. ARPA allowed us to restore $3.8 million worth of county services with that one-time funding in addition to the 13 to 15 million of other one-time funding that balanced this year's budget. We're likely to need to continue to use one-time funding in FY '23 as our revenue is still recovering and to offset cost pressures, including compensation for our workforce and other potential cost pressures, including metro, schools, and the impact of inflation on our contracts. Next, I'm going to share a little bit more information on how our tax receipts are looking and what we anticipate for FY '23. So, fortunately, we are seeing continued recovery in a number of the tax sources, and by FY '23, we anticipate a return to normalcy for most other non-tax sources. Our consumption taxes that are received monthly, including sales, meals, car rental, and hotel tax, have been impacted perhaps more than any other revenue source. You'll see that the graph on the left here combines those sources by fiscal year. In our last normal year of fiscal 2019, these taxes together made up just over 10% of total general fund taxes. In FY 2021, each of them was down significantly when compared with FY '19. Sales tax was down 12%, meals down 33%, car rental down 46%, and hotel tax was down 77% in FY '21 compared to '19. But in recent months, we've begun to see some consistent recovery in these sources. For example, in July, meals tax receipts were just 9% lower than the same month in FY '19, and sales tax in July actually showed growth of 7% over July sales tax receipts in FY '19. Unfortunately, our hotel tax in July was still lagging FY '19 revenues by 50%. You can see on the graph on the left that when we look at all three of these together, we expect revenues to be up 20%, over FY '21 actuals in FY 2022, and that in FY 2023 will be 41% better than FY '21 was. So, while taxes are looking better than this time last year, they're still not quite back to more normal levels. On the other hand, our residential real estate market continues to show strength. Although we will not know until later in the calendar year how much residential real estate values have increased, preliminary sales data shows positive growth. The graph on the right shows data from MLS on the number of home sales. The blue line is all sales, the yellow line is attached homes, and the blue line detached homes. In recent months, you can see that the activity in the market has been greater than in 2020 and in 2019. Similarly, home prices have been increasing over prior years this calendar year. In June and July, there was some leveling off, and many sources are suggesting a return to more normal levels of market activity and price increases. The prices and sales that we've seen this calendar year will impact the assessments of residential properties in January. Given the market activity that we've seen in the residential market, we are anticipating positive growth in residential property assessments. The chart on the left shows our expected positive growth in residential assessments in red. You see on the far right, the red bar is the FY '22 anticipated increase in residential assessments. But potentially offsetting this anticipated growth in residential assessments, we're anticipating pressure in the commercial sector. As we've mentioned in previous budget conversations, there's continued uncertainty in the office real estate market. The chart on the right highlights the increase in vacancy rates that we're seeing in the county, and that's one factor in assessed values of properties in this sector. There's also the continued uncertainty of the return to the workplace and changes to how businesses are evaluating the need for physical office space. For hotels, which are also in that commercial sector of real estate assessments, we continue to see slow recovery in tourism, but, and we're also anticipating costs as a result of inflation and interest rates. So, together, all the commercial sectors, office, hotels, apartments, and retail make up about 47% of our real estate tax base, and real estate taxes are over 70% of total tax revenues. So, while we expect pressure on assessments to impact FY '23, we are hoping to see continued recovery in all sectors of the commercial market, because Arlington's commercial real estate market really is a key underpinning of the county's diversified financial tax As I mentioned earlier, we're in a better fiscal position, and we have a more solid outlook than we had this time last year. But similar to last year, there are a number of funding priorities and economic uncertainties to navigate in the FY '23 budget. These economic uncertainties will impact the tax base, but more importantly, our community. We expect there will be some level of continued pandemic response to support both the health and welfare of our community as there are lingering economic impacts on individuals and businesses. Also, in order for us to maintain delivery of high-quality government services, we face a real challenge in employee recruitment and retention. We will need to continue to carefully navigate the pressures on our revenues and the expenditure needs to be responsive, but also to be fiscally responsible, shoring up our budget with an appropriate level of one-time resources until we see more revenue recovery. There are a number of things that are going to impact the final budget the manager brings before the county board in the February timeframe. First, real estate assessments are going to be finalized in early January, setting the largest of our revenue sources for fiscal '23. We're going to be getting additional data points each month on sales, meals, and hotel taxes that are going to help us set our best estimates for fiscal '23 revenue for these sources. We'll be getting department input on the impact of inflation and other contractual cost pressures, as well as input on the needs related to the economic and pandemic support that's going to be needed. At this point, our assumptions for the fiscal '23 budget include that real estate assessments will be increasing 1 to 2%, and other revenue will be up 5 to 10%. The manager's forecast includes compensation increases and assumes that non-personnel expenses are increasing between 3 and 5%. To close the budget gap, the manager and the board have the typical levers of utilizing one-time funds, revenue changes, and expenditure reductions or realignments. One additional input to the manager's budget will be the county's support for schools. Revenue-sharing agreement lays out a 47% share of local tax revenues to support schools as the starting point for the fiscal '23 budget. Initial estimates for FY 2023 are that ongoing revenue will be 4 to 5% higher than the FY '22 adopted budget for schools. It's important to remember that the county provides support to schools beyond that revenue-sharing agreement as well, through school health nurses and services, crossing guards, DHS programs that help children and families, athletic fields, and maintaining safe routes to schools. This graph shows a general timeline from now until the fiscal year starts next summer. We're working with the county manager's communications office to lay out how we can engage with the public and they can engage with us over the next few months. This will probably include both sharing information through videos or other means, as well as opportunities for online feedback with stakeholders. And that will conclude my presentation on the FY 2023 budget outlook.
Thank you, Ms. Hughes. Very much appreciated. I don't know if colleagues have questions. We can also turn back to the manager for the revenue forecast and ARPA discussion if colleagues do not. I don't see, go ahead, Mr. Karantopoulos.
Only, I mean, first of all, thank you. That was very comprehensive, and it's actually a great, great experience to start. That was very comprehensive, and it's actually a great, great experience to start the September with budget season. So on the vacancy rate, I saw a projection up to 19.4%. So do we have any idea why we project that? I mean, what is the underlying assumption?
So that actually is not a projection. That is the current vacancy rate, and Mr. Tucker, who is here, might want to step up and offer some thoughts on that because he was feeling left alone in the back there. But he can give you an explanation, I think, of just a short summary of what he sees the future trend over the next quarter or two, something like that.
Mr. Tucker.
Good evening, County Board, and thank you, Mr. Manager. Currently, yes, the vacancy rate is hovering in the neighborhood of 19% to 20%. We have seen about a 5% increase since the time the pandemic has started. Some of that we knew was coming with the vacation of spaces by some of the federal tenants who had given notice a few years back. But similarly, we've seen a significant number of subletting of spaces on the market. That gets factored into the vacancy rate, as I understand its calculation. Also, we... The normal activity that we would see with, in terms of industry renewing new leases, that has slowed down. Many companies have put that on pause until they have more predictability about what's going to happen in the market. And also, those clients who were looking at the market, many of them are still considering the market, but they are delaying location decisions. So I think all of those things together contribute to the increase in vacancy. If my... I don't have my notes in front of me, but if my memory serves me correct, every 1% of vacancy represents about $3.5 million to the... A tax revenue to the county budget. And I do believe that as we exit the pandemic, we will see some recovery there. I think it'll take some time, but I think the communities that will be best poised to rebound and have an economic recovery will be those that incorporate some flexibility into things like uses, considering there will be businesses that don't survive the pandemic. And so when we have those vacant spaces, how do we plan to reuse them, reconsider them, repurpose them, think about industries that we're seeing now that are hybrids of things that may not have existed as far as how we define traditional business uses in the past? And so I wanted to make sure that we're prepared to do that, and I think we are very pleased that during the planning work session last week, our planning department is working with AED and looking at some of those, how we consider everything from ground floor uses to upper floor uses, and particularly in many of our office buildings. So happy to answer any specific questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. That was very informative.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. I know this is a source of focus of each member of the board, and we're not asking you to single-handedly say that there wouldn't be any rise in the office vacancy rates in the fallout from the pandemic, but your thoughtful remarks are really helpful as we think about the fiscal outlook for the coming year. So I don't have any other questions. I think it'd be back to the manager for maybe a revenue forecast and ARPA discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. So I wanted to move on to the American Rescue Plan Act discussion, and what we're going to do is share some guiding principles on the use of the funds. A number of our sister jurisdictions took different approaches when it came to ARPA funding, and the reason why we have waited until now was we were waiting for a few things. One was for some clear guidance from the federal government on the appropriate use and the eligibility restrictions that surrounded rescue plan funding. The other was to see how the Commonwealth did when the General Assembly and Senate got together in August and made funding decisions on their use of ARPA funds. And so frankly, I was pretty disappointed with what the state did as far as whether they put any bundles of money together for the use of localities. And with a better sense of that, I wanted to go ahead with the presentation and remind the community of the funds we received and suggest a potential approach using some principles. But I will be back to you next month with very specific allocations, except in a few circumstances that I think you're familiar with. So I think we're going to... Someone is going to put up the slides. I think this is going to work magically.
Okay.
Thank you. We go on to the next slide. In March of this year, President Biden signed a $1.9 trillion ARPA legislation, and the main purpose of that is to provide states and localities with funds for fiscal recovery. Arlington's allocation out of that $1.9 trillion is $46 million, and that comes in two equal allotments. The first one we received in May of this year, the second one we receive in May of next year. And those funds must be obligated, the first tranche by the end of 2024, and the second by the end of 2026. It's also important to note that there are... Within the $1.9 trillion, there are a number of other sources of funding streams that we've been paying close attention to. Arlington residents have benefited from about $7 million in rental assistance above the funds I've identified, the $23 million. And also, there's been close to $10 million that has assisted us in some of our transit programs. And in addition, our colleagues at Arlington Public Schools separately have been allocated close to $19 million. We go on to the next slide. Michael Stewart, who's our deputy director of the Department of Management and Finance, is probably one of the... Has studied and really knows the details of the permitted use of these funds, and they fall essentially into four buckets. First is to support COVID-19 response efforts. The second is to replace lost revenue for governments. That is not mean anything goes, but it's a fairly broad interpretation of what revenue we have foregone that we might be able to use these funds to replace. It's another set of factors where the funding can be addressed is to address the systemic challenges that have come about with the way the pandemic has really affected our community. In many cases, there's been inequity in the way those effects have hit our community. And then also, finally, supporting economic stabilization for businesses and households. Let's go on to the next slide. So the $23 million, that's the number to focus on. So in April, the county board, knowing that we had... Remember, we got the money in March. You've already allocated $3.8 million of that $23 million, and that $3.8 million was used to restore some budget cuts that had been built into the proposed fiscal 22 budget. That $3.8 million went to reopen our Cherrydale and Glen Carlin libraries, to reopen our Department of Parks and Recreation community centers, to provide some funding for our tourism staff to make sure they could stay on board since the tourism industry and our hotel revenues had plummeted, and also to provide some maintenance funding needed for some of our parks. That essentially leaves available for further conversation $19.2 million. In April, you put together a number of factors that you asked us to focus on, on how to use the $19.2 million. They're all addressed there in the box. Public health needs, obviously, number one on the list, also responding to community housing and hunger needs, and then the assistance to small business and nonprofits. And the board did go out of its way to say, as funding became available, employee compensation should be a priority. So with that $19.2 million, you'll see that we've gone back and done some review of the situation. And as of right now, we estimate that of that $19.2 million, we'll need approximately $5 million to do our first responsibility, which is vaccines, testing, tracing, and assistance for eviction prevention, food security, rental assistance, congregant care support. That's an estimate of the first chunk of that $19.2 million. This board on Saturday also took action to set aside $2 million for the Grant 2.0 program to support small businesses. People at the time may have been wondering, and I know the board was explicit about it, but this is the source of that $2 million in funding. So what I'm about to talk to you about is principles that we think should apply to what is remaining out of that $19.2 million or $12.2 million. Next slide. So here are some of the guiding principles. You can call them buckets, call them circles with nice graphics in them. These are the areas we think that we should be focused on trying to direct those funds and weighing the values and focus on the vulnerable in our community in those areas that would be most benefited by the funds. And I'm not going to go through each of the graphics there. You see what they are. Let's go on to the next slide. This is actually important. This is a chart that we're using, and we hope that the community will take a look at, which is that I've described everything in that first column, the $5 million for pandemic response, the restoration of the 22 cuts, the grants, and then the $12.2 million that's available. Now, that is the first tranche of $23 million. Now, that second tranche of $23 million, which I'm not going to spend a lot of time talking on, there is right now arguably already a claim on that. Since we've used close to $4 million to restore services, those services are ongoing services. They include libraries, recreation centers, and they will need to continue. So to that extent, there's already a claim on that second tranche of money, and that $4 million or $4.2 million number we have there is essentially the $3.8 million number inflated into the out years. So let's take a look at the next slide. We have some general ideas we have with these concepts of the kinds of things that might be included in each bucket. For example, housing assistance, we've talked about eviction prevention, workforce sustainability. We will, and I will be talking about retention bonuses in critical staffing areas, equity in disadvantaged neighborhoods. We'll also be talking a little bit about a crisis intervention center function we have at the Department of Human Services. And then also childcare options. Interestingly, this came up a little bit. There was an article in the paper over the weekend. Almost all of these buckets are affected by one item, which is just the absolute difficulty of recruiting and maintaining staff for our childcare centers and also for the county and all our businesses. That has been one of the primary drivers of some of the economic dislocation we've been seeing. Also, for transit and transportation, we're very actively considering, and I seek your feedback, on the possibility of waiving revenue that we might receive from students who use art. In other words, saying that all Arlington Public School students who pay any bus fare, we would give them a pass on that, and we would subsidize that. So free transit for students. And then also looking selectively at those individuals who use transit to see not everyone, but those who are economically disadvantaged, giving them a pass on having to pay for transit. And then you can see also some additional focus on workforce development programs. So there is that $12.2 million. There's a mix of items there. We've gone back to a number of departments and asked for their ideas. I will come back to you in October with some very specific recommendations on the allocation of those funds, and it is my suggestion that those allocation ideas sit out in the community and that the board take action on a final adoption of those in November. Now, there will be an exception to that that I'll talk about after this presentation. So let me summarize the next steps. We have in October, I'll be presenting proposed allocations of the rescue plan. Those of you at home who are big budget nerds will know that that's also the time when we come to you with closeout of fiscal '22 and allocations of the one-time dollars available then. I think upcoming, the board is going to discuss the possibility of budget guidance and adopting that in October. We will have a pretty... Very active community feedback. We're going to seek on any of the proposals we put out there, and then final adoption of all those allocations in November, and saving the second tranche for later. So that is my brief, hopefully informative, presentation on the rescue plan. I'm happy to take any questions at this point, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Very informative, provides context. We'll go to Mr. Dorsey first. I will just flag for the clerk, eventually, I think, we'll want to just show briefly the draft budget guidance, but that'll be after questions. So go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Excellent presentation. But as you think about the FY '22 budget holes and potentially using the second tranche to fill those in the remaining years of eligibility, help me understand your thinking in terms of how that marries with the projected rate of overall revenue recovery for the county, because a significant number of those budget cuts were from what had previously been generally ongoing operations of the county, which we would expect to return in the form of being fully funded in your budgets once we return to economic health.
So that question points out something that I did not, and I should have emphasized on the slide. As we're talking about rescue plan funds, that is just a subset of what will go into the full budget. When we adopted... When the board adopted the fiscal '22 budget, built in there, there was approximately $12 or $13 million of additional one-time funds used to support that budget. So what you have pointed out is we run the risk of building a budget that is relying on a higher percentage of one-time funds. I think in the presentation you heard from Emily Hughes, you see that there's strength beyond what we had anticipated last April and additional ongoing revenue coming in. I'm fairly confident that we will be able to fill most of that gap that was created in one-time funds, but not all of it. So that is the reason why I'm saying we might want to make use of some of these one-time funds. I think the degree to which we will need to use them will be less than last year, but still a... Something that we're going to have to do. So I remain more optimistic and feel like we'll be on a firmer footing, but I don't want anyone to think that we'll be fully back to the point where we will be using ongoing funds for every one of our ongoing functions. There still will be some need, much less than that $13 million I mentioned in the other part of the budget and the $4 million I mentioned here, less, but nevertheless, still a piece of what we have.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. I feel like that was sort of listening to Greenspan every word right there as you were saying it, but I appreciate that. Go ahead, Ms. Crystal.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and I just wanted to add my voice to where Mr. Dorsey was going. Last year was so challenging because we did have, between what was then the CARES Act, right, the first round of federal relief, and then just one-time sources, for example, the savings on the leasing of this building. We were simultaneously having a very difficult conversation about the constraints of ongoing funding while also being in an environment with a fair bit of one-time funding. That is the type of environment that makes it very tempting to engage in behaviors that are not responsible. And I think we saw that happen, for example, all across the Commonwealth, when the General Assembly and governor, in their wisdom, said that there would be teacher salaries to be raised if only the localities would match them at a time that the localities were experiencing significant shortfalls in ongoing revenue but awash in one time. And so I think this is going to be a challenging budget conversation for us to have, and I think it behooves all of us to try to really be as responsible as we can in those conversations. And I really appreciate Mr. Dorsey asking that straight out of the gate, because I think this is going to be a big theme head. I just wanted to... I know you're not necessarily asking for feedback on the ARPA proposals or suggestions you've outlined, but I just wanted to share kind of a couple of my own values or the extent I see sort of a through line of these opportunities. I think there is a story to be told on a number of issues in which the pandemic focused our attention and, in some cases, significantly exacerbated longstanding problems, not only in the Arlington community, but our society. What is exciting to me about the potential of the ARPA dollars is that I think Arlington has the building blocks to tackle some of those problems in a really meaningful way. And I hope that we can use these funds, frankly, as jet fuel to do it. Mental health is one of those areas where I know our team at DHS has been working tirelessly to sort of come up... To come up with these sort of investments that could make meaningful change and progress for community members experiencing behavioral challenges that have only gotten more severe during the pandemic. Childcare is another one. You know, I was just saying to somebody earlier today, it feels like the rest of the country has caught up to where Arlington was back in 2018, was acknowledging that we had this really severe challenge. You know, I think we have weathered better than a lot of communities. The closures, for example, of daycare centers, we've seen fewer, but we know from our risk and reach analyses about some very specific places we can make investments. You know, I think it is within striking distance. You know, I think it is within striking distance to meet the kind of remaining delta of low-income kids and families that need reliable childcare. I think the ARPA funding is an opportunity to take a big bet on things like non-traditional hours of childcare, which we knew is a huge need in our community. And the last point too that I'll make as well is transit. You know, we have done regionally through the Northern Virginia Transportation Commission some really, I think thoughtful analyses about the opportunities for zero fare transit and the need to approach that with some finesse, right? Especially in a system where so much of our fares on art are actually paid by the federal government via smart benefits, right? Entirely zero fare may not make sense, but there are so many opportunities for us to figure out exactly, as you've teed up for us, zero fare for the transit dependent, zero fare for students. You know, we have seen a huge blow to public transit, and when it comes to the effects of the pandemic and the opportunity to build on what we know and entice folks back and using ARPA dollars to do that. So I am now at risk of kind of belaboring the theme, but I, the phrase, it's so hackneyed that comes to mind, is a crisis is a terrible thing to waste. And I just think about how we have a once-in-a-generation infusion of one-time funding. We have the needs that have grown during the pandemic, but we also have the policy analysis, the staff work, and the political will to tackle these in big ways. So there's not a lot to be excited about with regard to the consequences of the pandemic, but I think this is one. And I'm really excited to see what specific ideas staff can bring forward, and we can weigh in on in the month ahead.
Thank you, Ms. Crystal. Ms. Carby.
Yeah, thank you. I think I'll pick up where both my colleagues were. I also think this is a once-in-a-generation opportunity, and it is important to do some of this, and I think that's where we all want to go. However, I found myself thinking, I think along the lines of Mr. Dorsey, watching the presentations. So we have $46 million, which we're going to get in half in '21 and half in '22, and then we have to have it all spent by the end of '26. Is that right? So I'm just wondering, and sorry, this is like just came to me while sometimes things get revealed by presentations. Might we want, maybe not this year, but the next year? I think we don't want all that money to get spent, and like then we fall off a cliff, because it feels like what we're trying to do is provide the support so as our, hopefully our vacancy rate goes down and we do better and better, you know, we kind of have a nice kind of down, a glide. So possibly not this year, but possibly the next budget year. Have you thought of sort of being explicit about the fact that not all this money is going to get spent in these two budget years, but we may want to be parsing it out so that, spreading it out so that we can do, come to more of a glide path down, and hopefully we'll be up and running by the time the money gets out?
So I think that is, what you're saying is music to my fiscally conservative heart, but the, one of the slides we had there, which, and I apologize, I know that Mr. Dorsey may come over and clobber me, the bridge that we had in one of those slides, that what we really need to do is we need to get to the other side, and we need to make sure we have the funds to get to the other side. So allocating all the money is not necessarily a virtue in this process in the first year or year and a half. And that's one of the, I think, one of the good things about the rescue plan is the money doesn't have to be obligated right away. So the concept of keeping 10% or 20% of it available for an as-needed basis and seeing how we're doing might make a lot of sense. And so that's something the board can weigh as we look at the proposals coming forward next month.
Thank you. And I think it'll really come home next year, but this puts us at a hard point. I was thinking in some ways we can kind of relax a little bit because we've got this support, but then, Ms. Crystal, you brought up the issue of childcare. We don't want to get that off to a roaring start, and then two years later have the bottom drop out.
And that's why these have to be capital investments, one-time investments. I mean, this is exactly Mr. Dorsey's point that I was trying to emphasize. We cannot make ongoing investments on the basis of one-time money, exactly.
Although it is the salaries that are the issue, but that's another difficult question. Yeah. Yeah, no, that's right, because then the costs go down. Yes, excuse me, I'm getting in the weeds here at the dais. Apologies, we can talk about this.
No problem, as long as they're not legislating on the dais, I'm less worried about the weeds, but want to be mindful of our staff. Mr. Karantonis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. I fully agree with Ms. Crystal and Mr. Dorsey and Ms. Carby on this. Yes, it's an amazing opportunity to do things that we otherwise would have to postpone or ration in a way that would be very difficult to lift, and we can do that. On the other side, we do have two basic pressures. One is the general operation of the government begins to be more expensive, and you know, we started, Mr. Schwartz, you started already talking about the pressure of competitive wages and retention funding. This is concerning to me because I know that this adds to the base of our operation budget. So this is not like we are cruising. The second thing is, one thing that I believe, Ms. Crystal, forgot is housing. So for example, we want, we know that our pressure on housing grants funds, for example, will be higher. And last year already, we tried to find ways to, you know, on the one side, we had the eviction prevention and rental assistance funding that is 100% COVID-related. I do think that during the recovery, we will be moving from this into, you know, building structures that are more, you know, longer term, medium and longer term. And this is to me, you know, the first thing that comes to mind is the housing grants program and how we, and how we, you know, improve that, and how we make it more effective, and how we reach more people. Because right now, we're basically paying, 94% of the recipients are people who live already in affordable housing, in committed affordable housing. So we want to expand that. We want to expand this space. And I'm very interested in see how, and to see how, over several years, until 2026, as Ms. Carby said, how we can help with this money to make this kind of, you know, strategic adjustment of our housing support programs. Other than that, I, I'm very interested to know, to see how we adjust with the increased cost of operation. And how, and how far this increased cost of operation, I mean, as we've seen before in the, in the tax revenue, in tax revenue projection, it doesn't look like right now that our tax revenue will be increasing at the same pace. It will be lagging. So that's a point of concern for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Karantonis. I'm mindful that, for me, the childcare capital costs are of interest, and I also, as I've shared with colleagues, addressing those most in need, which often is through personnel, to serve those most in need, DHS, there's needs there on mental health as well. But I'll also be trying to think about one of our other deficits, which seems to be the challenge we face with respect to the 30,000 Arlingtonians who have household income less than 35,000 a year. And so I'm interested in the ARPA piece in addition to employee compensation, seeing if we can make strategic investments there while mindful of being fiscally responsible. So I want to just, Mr. Schwartz, I saw your light on, did you?
Now, the only thing I wanted to add, and just highlighted in all of your comments, which is that there's a delicate balance going on here, but making sure that we realize the ARPA funds are one-time. We also see an improvement in our ongoing revenue, but we're not back to where we were in 2019. I remain optimistic that we, you know, we'll be able to do those things that the board states are priorities. We will not be able to do everything. We'll have to make some choices. And I'll talk a little bit later about the personnel issues. One-time use of these kinds of dollars for personnel can be effective, but not for base salaries. It can be effective for other types of things. So I actually, you know, I'm optimistic that we have the team right behind me and the people in front of me, and we have a community. We'll get to actually a good place, and I think people can't lose sight that the rescue plan is actually a good thing. I mean, and it's about $2 trillion. Some people have asked why we didn't get more. We've gotten, I think, our fair share, and it will help us, and we have some choices to make, but I think we'll be better for it.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Really appreciate those conceptually closing comments. Just a little housekeeping. Am I right that Ms. Hughes' presentation, as well as your presentation, will go up on our budget website? And there is, continues to be an email for feedback and thoughts on that website with respect to budget comments. So then I'll just quickly ask for transparency for our community, and with the forgiveness of a few staff in the audience just a second. Ms. Jacobs, we worked on a set of draft guidance. This is for fiscal year '23, and I want to clarify, we've been focused on the ARPA discussion. This is in, this is for fiscal year '23, and this is mostly not so that people can try to read really quickly every word, but it is meant to show our community that the board has worked on draft guidance, that we will finalize over the coming month and adopt next month, that reflects a lot of the priorities that were discussed. But this is for ongoing budget needs, and this is a draft. We will also post this on our budget website over the coming couple of days. There's just a little bit more for illustrative purposes on the second page, if you don't mind, Madam Clerk, Ms. Jacobs. So, and there are a couple we did not talk in detail about, climate change challenges, and we have to address that. That will be part of our budget guidance, as it is a shared priority of all members of the board. So with that, we'll conclude, and I'm mindful that there are other presentations unless, and we'll send it back to Mr. Schwartz, maybe on the census. I know there's three other topics in your report. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to ask, if we can, if Chief Penn and Anita Friedman go up to the microphone there, and Deborah will sit behind. And I'm, given the hour, I do want to ask the indulgence of the board, because it's unusual for me, as I go through in preparation for a board meeting, to feel like I need to come to you and talk about something that is of, I don't want to overstate it, I don't want to call it a crisis, but it's of high importance to me, and I feel like I want to discuss it with you and with the community. So about two weeks ago, I had asked Chief Penn to prepare a presentation that would talk a little bit about crime statistics and the reports and the community, you know, with more people up and about as the pandemic seemed to be loosening its grip. That was going to be the purpose of the conversation. But, you know, related and important issues come up over the past two weeks, so that's the reason why I've asked Chief Penn and our staff from DHS to be here today and to answer your questions. Now, last week, a story was published in local media that highlighted some of the retention issues facing the Arlington County Police Department. And as Chief Penn reported to me on Friday, "To date this calendar year, 46 officers have either announced their intent to leave the force, have left, or retired." Forty-six. This compares with a total of 26 for all of calendar 20, and more officers have left the force to date this year than left in all of calendar year 2019 and 2020 combined. We're also aware that there are additional members of the force who are in the application process and may leave between now and the end of the year. Now, some of you will remember back to 2018, when then Chief R restructured the duties of the department, and that assumed a functional strength of 325 officers. Today, we're at 290. And we're going to be closer to 280 by the time we get to November. And some additional data. From March 1st through September 2nd of this year, we have used 3,330 hours of overtime to meet minimum staffing. The same figure for this time last year was 1,680 hours. So the number of overtime hours we've used have doubled just between March and September of this year. Also, 35% of our current supervisors in the police department have come into their positions in the last 12 months. Since June of this year, police have lost 26 staff, nine of whom were supervisors. And Chief can talk a little bit about it. He is not intending to fill those supervisory positions, just given some of the issues I laid out. There are two other important trends to highlight. The departure of police officers in Arlington, it's not unique to Arlington. So there are some trends here that, you know, we like to think we can control our destiny, but other things that are going on, on a national level. You know, the job of police officers has become more complicated, and whatever your view on what's going on nationally, you know, we're really proud, and this board talked about it in July, and many times, about our professional police department and how we're a model agency. But our police officers have made it clear that the demands and stress are really weighing heavily on them. And part of that article that came out last week, a survey of current police staff showed that close to 100 are thinking of leaving within the next 12 months. Some recently who have left have left the profession, while for the first time in memory, some choose to leave the police department to join the fire department. And others have simply retired early. And then some have taken advantage of something, I know I talked to the board about this in 2018 and 2019 when Amazon was coming. I said, "Thank God, Amazon is coming." Said, "I may be back in three or four years saying, 'Oh my God, Amazon's here.'" We have lost a number of staff, including Deputy Chief Quigley will be leaving next week. Just as recently in the past week, three or four officers who are going to Amazon as they staff up their operation, which I have to say makes sense. They're going to a lower-stress environment for higher pay, and I understand that. Another trend, and this one is really very recent, and I would characterize it as especially cruel. Our police participated actively, and we work closely with the police practices group this past year, our officers, our chief. This board was incredibly excited about how we have an opportunity to have much more of our mental health care treatment handled by clinical professionals. And the board appropriated funds for that, to stand up crisis teams. And police and DHS have been working literally day and night to make that board's commitment and the community's wish and the desire of police and DHS a reality. However, since July 9th, when the Commonwealth of Virginia shut down admissions to nearly all state psychiatric hospitals, Arlington County Police have been called, as they always have, to a number of serious and urgent situations where people require immediate attention for their mental health needs. In these circumstances, when a temporary detention order is required and no mental health beds are available in Arlington or anywhere else in the state, the individuals going through the trauma and stress of serious mental health crisis are essentially being warehoused at Virginia Hospital Center. As the hours stretch on, the individuals are sometimes sedated and handcuffed to gurneys. I'll discuss the needs of our mental health professionals in a minute, but on many shifts, our police, over the past weeks, three, four, and sometimes more officers must sit with these individuals in the emergency room. Sometimes half of our shift strength of officers are essentially out of service, sitting in the emergency room at Virginia Hospital Center. The work of our officers, which is often rewarding, and was envisioned just recently when I talked about creating the Community Engagement Division with Deputy Chief Vincent, and the work of our officers to enhance traffic safety and to work with businesses and restaurants, is being left untended if those trends continue. You know, our police, I want to make it clear to the community, our police will always be there to respond to violent crimes in our community. However, the work that makes the job of a police officer fulfilling, some of those things I just mentioned, the chance to make a difference by being part of the solution rather than just showing up to pick the pieces of shattered lives, picking those up, that soon could be missing if these trends continue. And I can't fulfill my charge as county manager to keep this community safe with a great police department without a fighting chance. So I'm going to have some proposals, I'll discuss about that in a minute. However, before I do that, I wanted to talk about the other part of what I raised today. The staff that handle our mental health crises, our emergency staff in DHS, is at this moment itself down more than 50% in staffing, including supervisors. The action by the Commonwealth to shutter their hospitals to new admissions has again thrust our overtaxed and understaffed emergency service clinicians into the middle of an impossible situation. A group that was staffed at 26 individuals now has less than half that strength, half of the 26. The team can't cover all shifts. They are called nonstop to respond to the same calls I just referenced earlier. The job of being a behavioral health emergency service worker has, like police, become more complex with increased acuity seen in the person served, with elevated expectations and a high public profile. This work requires significant This work requires significant clinical training and certification as a pre-screener. It is a mandated service, critical to public safety. The Client Services Bureau, in which emergency services is embedded, is currently at a 32% vacancy rate. That's 13 out of the 41 staff, with two more about to go out on maternity leave. This is a trend we've seen over the last three years. Key positions such as emergency clinicians and psychiatrists are extremely hard to fill as the result of a national, again, a national shortage, public demand escalating needs, compensation, complexity of the work, 24-hour demand, and competition with surrounding jurisdictions. When there are not enough staff available, other DH staff who are dedicated to addiction treatment or other acute issues are required to fill in, and the department's ability to carry out its most important and most immediate mission is impaired. And like police, there is a turnover in behavioral health, over 30% over the past three years, and a local, regional, and national shortage of persons with the credentials needed to perform these duties. So over the past several weeks, our police, Department of Human Services, and I want to thank our Sheriff's Department, and the representatives of the Virginia Hospital Center, have been meeting literally every day to accelerate planned improvements, so that we can take the Crisis Intervention Center at the Department of Human Services and use it as an alternative to the Emergency Department, when patients in a behavioral health crisis must board until their service they desperately need becomes available. A number of steps have been taken, but a critical need right now is for therapeutic staff to provide 24/7, 365 coverage in the Crisis Intervention Center, to ensure the needs of persons in crises are met, and they are in a safe and calm environment. That need is currently not budgeted. So as I said at the Saturday board meeting, and as I noted earlier today in discussing the budget outlook and also in guidance, businesses and government are finding recruitment and retention of staff particularly difficult during the pandemic. We have challenges in our libraries, our businesses have challenges in hiring restaurant workers and grocery staff. And when hiring and retention challenges affect the community's health and safety, that is the most important challenge I have as county manager. And so I want to be clear to everybody, the time will come, soon, not today, but soon, to address the challenges about filling our staff at libraries and parks, our staff in planning and technology, and many of our other departments. But I'm saying today, the challenges we face for health and safety positions can't wait. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to suggest today, an idea, and I will then consult with labor representatives, I'm going to ask the board if they would not take a formal action, but I'll call it a soft set aside of $3 million of that $12 million I just talked about, to set aside for potential retention and incentive bonuses, one-time payments, to the workforce I've just talked about. To emphasize, I don't have a specific proposal for you today, this is really complicated to figure out how we want to structure it, and we're working with Human Resources about the best way to do it, but it's critical, I feel, to signal to the staff involved, please don't leave, we need you, we need those payments. And again, these are just one of the steps that we'll be able to take. So, and now I'm speaking in somewhat dire tones, I feel like the situation is really critical, and I will stop there, and I know you'll have a number of questions, I hope your questions really will be for the chief and for our staff at the Department of Human Services, and I'm also happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Outline some stark, stark concerns. We'll take questions. Ms. Crystal.
Thank you very much. I think that was a very excellent and compelling summation of a set of issues that I think we've sort of seen swirling for a while, and I, you know, I think, to some extent, the closure of the state hospitals might have been a precipitating event for something that has been a challenge that has been slow-moving, and yet very severe. I guess the question I have, and this probably is for professionals, and, you know, our manager alluded to it, but I think about how, certainly we've seen this on the side of, of education and teachers, and I suspect it's true for policing and mental health work as well, for a while, we have been in Arlington, maybe able to kind of outrun some national dynamics, right, of, of not enough people going into these fields. You know, we, we've been able to compensate, I'm not going to say well, right, like we've heard very loud and clear from our employee groups, at least on the public safety side, and so I'm certainly not going to say, you know, very well objectively, but very well relatively. And so to the extent that there were still folks in this field to recruit, Arlington could make a good play for them. And now, with the pandemic, and I think the shortages of people willing to enter these professions or stay in these professions for the very good reasons you've described, you know, there, there's almost no outrunning to be done, this has come for all of us, which I suppose is a roundabout way of saying, you know, is this something that can be solved with, with recruitment and retention bonuses? I know you're, you've talked about these structural issues, I know that our, especially on the mental health side, our team is working, as you were saying, to, to change the Crisis Intervention Center as a sort of, an alternative to what's happening with emergency response that requires the sustained police piece. I know we're trying to be innovative at a time when, when staff are short supplied, but I guess the question is, how far does this get us? Not that it's not an excellent idea, and I'm happy to give that soft support that you've asked, but are there more structural pieces about the job of policing right now, or the job of being a mental health provider right now, that we can't outrun anymore and need, whether it's through lobbying at the state level, you know, further policy reforms on the public safety side, that, that we need to be embracing as aggressively as we are the idea of recruitment and retention bonuses? I know that's a really big question to put to you both, but I just want to make sure we're not, I think this is an almost essential strategy, but, but is it enough?
I think there's a lot that goes to it. You know, I want to begin by talking about, you know, I'm incredibly fortunate to have very talented and professional staff, I mean, I think it's important to acknowledge that and the great work that's done daily. I'm incredibly proud of, of the police department and the men and women that work there, and, you know, I think we've always, we've continued to provide service at an above-average or an exceptional level, and part of the conversation really needs to be the, the setting of expectations, and what can we realistically do? I mean, to be perfectly honest, we cannot continue service level at where we are today with the numbers that we're at, it's just not possible. So I think there's a lot of conversation and prioritizing, and, and, you know, what can we do with what we have, but, you know, it is critical to start with retaining the exceptional staff that we do have. And I've been having conversations across the department about, we're going to have to take a look at the next six months, I mean, my goal is to get to November, when our current recruit class finish field training and get out on the road, but that's not going to fix the issue that we're in. So how can we restructure, make changes, different ways of approaching things to, to address, you know, officer burnout, you know, having a work-life balance, and where, where are we going to prioritize our work? I mean, you know, there was a lot of conversation, which, you know, we certainly supported, where law enforcement should do less with mental health, well, I think we're doing more mental health now than we have in some time, and, you know, the need is to help people get the care and, and treatment that they need, but, you know, it, it is a big, broad conversation that goes beyond the police department, but I think this is a good first step, and then really taking a look at what can we do moving forward, what structural changes do we need to make, you know, long-term, or at least for the interim, to, to create a balance.
Thank you, Chief Penn. Did you want to?
And I, I don't know if our human services team has anything to add.
Thank you, county board members and, and Mr. Manager, and I'm here with Deborah Warren, who's the executive director of our Community Services Board. I think the simple answer to your question, Ms. Crystal, is, we cannot afford not to take action. Emergency services is a mandated service. Not just that, it, I have always viewed most of our clinicians, but especially emergency services clinicians, as non-uniform public safety. They don't wear the badge, they don't have a gun, but they are in as much danger oftentimes as public safety, without really the same level of benefits. That said, without a strong emergency services staff, competent equipped to deal with people, you will see increase in suicide, homicide, and all other kinds of community problems, because these are the people who receive the calls and talk the person from jumping off the bridge. So it is key that we be able to retain these people, and we simply cannot function at, at 60% of, of 100% staffing. Plus, we have come under increasing pressure, and you know, I, we very much engage with the advocates in conversations throughout the years, you know, Director Warren has been in conversations with NAMI and our Arlington Mental Health Associates, but we cannot do everything at the same time.
Yeah.
And although certain things are, are important, of course, first episode psychosis, there has to be, like Chief Penn is saying, a prioritization, a prioritization. It's the same people, we are the same people who are doing eviction prevention, coronavirus, mental health, there are so many community problems that are at our hands, but these folks, emergency clinicians, can go to other places, and they're going, because they're getting better salaries, and their workload is, you know, sometimes less than what we are requiring. I don't know if you wanted to add, Ms. Warren?
Yes, well, there are, okay, well, there are a lot of options for people who are credentialed, licensed clinicians, including, you know, telehealth was a great opportunity, but now there's all kinds of private entities that are recruiting, you know, I get these lovely cards in the mail all the time, you know, "Come work for us, you'll get a signing bonus, you, less paperwork." So, so a couple of points, I think, in terms of sort of state level, I think, working on with the, you know, lobbying for less regulation, licensing standards, less standards around Medicaid and so forth, I think we also need, it's just very hard to do the work, the amount of paperwork, it's unbelievable. But also, I think there's a longer-term piece that you're addressing, which is, we have pipeline issues. People don't want to go into this work, it's, it's not lucrative relative to, you know, and, and it involves, and we share so many pieces of this puzzle, it involves face-to-face work with people who are, are truly in a crisis and maybe behaving in a way that's scary or, you know, be threatening, and people can do other things, there's so many jobs available right now. So I think we really do need to develop more of a training academy approach in terms of behavioral health, more of, create lower-level positions so that people have a career ladder to build up, to get the training and experience, to, to get that license and to become pre-screeners. There's just a lot of pieces to the puzzle.
Yeah. I really appreciate that, and I think certainly stopping the bleeding, right, is part of it, and the hemorrhaging of staff, because I, it's clear, right, that creates the cycle, you're more likely to have to work overtime when they're under strength, you're, you're more likely to have to handle the hardest cases when you can't share a spectrum of them. I don't want to overstate the applicability of this example, because it's so much smaller in scale, but it, the example does come to mind of, of how having in-community, or more or less in-community, resources for sexual assault nurse exams reminds me a little bit of this situation, because we had officers, right, who would have to accompany a victim of sexual assault or domestic violence to Woodbridge or Petersburg, right, and would chew up the entirety of their shift, being able to bring those services into the community was really helpful for not only the survivors, but also less time for, for officers. And so, you know, I, I don't, I don't think there's a magic bullet here on the, on the mental health emergency side, and I think in part because it's so large in scale, but I do, you know, to the extent we've got upstream options, it's a, it's a yes and strategy, I guess. But I really appreciate, I think one of my takeaways, listening to, to, to both sides of this very interrelated phenomenon, is, is the setting of expectations is really important, and at a time when we're in such crisis, you know, a, a community that has always prided itself on innovation and new approaches, it may not be the time that we get to get our arms around that until we can address the crisis. So, I'm sorry, I've taken enough time, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Crystal. Ms., Chief Penn, did you, I see your light on, you may have wanted to add at this stage.
No, I was just going to follow up on one point, I mean, you know, I think the expectation piece is important, and, you know, the signaling to staff how much their work matters, and the work-life balance and the job satisfaction is key, I mean, you know, I think we've continued to provide service at a level, you know, and I've had this roll call at 5:30 this morning, where we're trying to keep providing at the level we have been and watching our numbers go down, so, you know, I, I think there's many pieces to the overall approach here.
Thank you, Chief Penn. Ms. Carby.
Yeah, thank you, and I'll just say, I want to thank the manager for, this was not easy to listen to, and I think in all my years, and it's been a lot, this is something that's kind of got my stomach clutching more than most things that, that come up for us. But thank you, because we need to hear it, and the community needs to hear it, so I appreciate it, and I think in listening to Ms. Crystal's line of questioning and sort of think, and some of the responses, it seems pretty clear, the manager's coming to us with the emergency thumb-in-the-dike thing that we need to do now, I'm totally supportive, and then what we need to do is make sure that we start rebuilding the dyke, and that's going to be longer term, so that there're kind of, there's two, there's, probably there's a medium term, I'm sure, before getting to the longer term. And then the communications piece is, is huge, and that's difficult, it's good that Ms. Help, Ms. Helfer is here, our communications person par excellence, because it's both communicating expectations to our community, what we're going to be able to do, what the situation really is, which is going to be something new for them, this is not something Arlington is used to hearing, and then communications, obviously, to our employees, that we do value them, care for them, and we're going to try and do everything we can to make these, these jobs something that they want to continue in and attract folks. Hopefully, we can maybe even reach out to, and then I think for us, there's going to be work on the, the government level with the state and the federal, if we can work on those, those regulations. You know, during COVID, it was emergency situation, you hear about emergency standards of care, right, in, in Idaho, maybe for mental health at some point, maybe we've got to ask and get some kind of emergency standard of care right now for, so that we can do this and not have to do quite all that paperwork, and get that down to reasonable levels, and that's maybe something we can help with, both our legislators on both the state and the federal level, and I think we're willing to, to work on that. But it feels like this needs to be a full-court press, a really full-court press, and I'm all in. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carby, Mr. Dorsey, and then Mr. Karantounas.
Thank you, this is all incredibly sobering, but as colleagues, you have acknowledged, not altogether unexpected, given circumstances, but you know, at the core, aside from the very real circumstances that you're describing among officers and the mental health clinicians, what we have here, Mr. Karantounas can join me in, and this is a good old-fashioned labor shortage, and you, you really don't have a whole bunch of tools to deal with those, those are, those are fairly straightforward, you provide incentives for people to stay and/or incentives for people to join up, and as we think about that, areas on, on the join up part have, have sometimes not been as successful, because there's a relaxation of standards, as there's been a, an approach of wanting to bring in a warm body, and retention efforts haven't been as successful as they could otherwise been, because there's been an attempt to make it available to everybody, so as to be broad and fair. So what I'm not necessarily looking for an answer now, but would just express as my individual expectation, is that we figure out some way to make sure that we are retaining excellence, and that we are encouraging excellence through whatever incentives that we think about, and that the relaxation of standards is, is, is done only when we believe that those standards are outdated, outmoded, and unnecessary, and are not simply in pursuit of, of warm bodies, because that may, may ease the short-term pain, but it creates long-term pain in terms of the delivery of those services in the community. So certainly, you're welcome to, I don't need you to respond now, I just want to articulate it, and I know it's sometimes difficult, when you've got your, your thumb on the dyke, you don't necessarily always make long-term decisions, I'm just hoping that here... I'm just hoping that here, we, we do so.
Go ahead, Chief Penn.
Yeah, I'd like to comment on that. I mean, you know, the one thing that I want to be real clear about is that we have not changed our hiring standards. The only change that we've made in my time in this role is, you know, how long it has to be since somebody used marijuana. Instead of two years, it's one year. That's it. I mean, and, and I honest, have no intention of changing that because, you know, I am incredibly proud of the men and women that work in the police department and the work that they do. And it's important to me to continue to provide service at the exceptional level. It's just a matter of finding the balance to where we do as much as we can. But it's important to start with the right folks in the job.
Thank you, Chief Penn. Ms. Friedman.
Likewise, we have not lack, relaxed any of our hiring standards. And I think you know that each of our programs has a data-driven performance measurement plan, which is now disaggregated by racial and ethnic data. But those performance measurement plans also are tied to individual key work expectations. So, you know, we have a regular means of assessing how well people are individually performing towards the program goals.
Ms. Warren, anything, anything to add, or that covers it?
I would just add that we have very crisp and clear documentation standards, tons of clinical supervisory oversight and productivity standards. So we have all kinds of measurements of, of quality, and we ensure that we maintain that, that level of quality.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair.
You want to pick up on that?
I do, because I, I want to thank Mr. Dorsey for, when I was talking about crisis standards of care, I was talking about the paperwork that you just say is just impossible and not, and not worthwhile. And that's, that, that was my focus, not on the quality. So thank you, Mr. Dorsey, for making that clear. We do want to continue with quality people. The one point I meant to also say is I think we could be, long-term, talking to our local universities and the community college, because I think there's a lot of recruiting to be done there that we could do, and a lot of folks that might be interested in these fields, so calling us to make some of those outreach efforts too, if that would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carby. Good, Mr. Dorsey. So, Mr. Karantounas, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, the discussion that we are having is also indicating that maybe we, we should have also our HR, you know, specialists here who could, you know, explain, for example, I mean, to be honest with you, one of the scary things for me, being a relative newbie in this, is that in six months, you, you lost fifty percent of your workforce. Because if I understand it correctly, from March 1st to September 2nd, thirteen people less, right? More or less? Or did I understand it wrong? So how fast did we lose, in the, in the Crisis Intervention Center, how fast did we lose fifty percent of our people?
Oh, in emergency services?
Yes.
Oh, yes. In, in a year.
In a year?
A year, yeah, in the last year. We have been averaging a thirty percent turnover rate for the last three years.
Yes.
In behavioral health.
So this is, this is.
On average, a third of the workforce turns over.
Mm-hmm. So this is a very volatile.
Yeah.
And taxing. So we were basically operating at the limit of, you know, the, the staffing elasticity of this, right?
Well, we've always had, yeah, very high caseloads for outpatient, and then struggling, as, as Deborah mentioned, to staff the emergency services twenty-four seven. So we've had to use contractors at times when we don't have full staff.
I, I guess you understand where I'm going. I mean, to understand the real pressures that we have been basically tolerating for a very, very long time. And now we have all of a sudden, you know, an overdrive and, and overheating of the problem.
Well, that I think was precipitated by the closure of the, as you remember.
Of the hospitals, yeah.
The, the state hospitals, because Craig Deeds, you know, incident proposed that the state hospitals be allowed to be the hospital of last resort. The current commissioner, who comes from the private sector, is looking at the interests of the hospitals above the interest of the locality, basically.
Yeah.
Sorry to interrupt you.
No, I, I understand. This is a dynamic that we need to understand because it, it really affects how we, you know, have to plan for, for, for response to that. Because, you know, just stemming the bleeding right now, it, it doesn't hire you the thirteen people that you would need, right? It, it just keeps, you know, the thirteen people who are now there. And, and the same applies to the police force, I, I guess. Only in the police force, I understand that we have a pipeline, right? We have a, a police academy, and we have also people who are officers that, who are right now in training, but they are, still don't count against, I mean, they're not counted in the force because they are in training. Is that correct?
Sure. We have, you know, an overall hired strength in three hundred and forty-two or three today. But, you know, we have twenty-four people in field training, twenty or so people in the academy, and then we've already started hiring for the January academy. So when officers are in this training phase, they don't count as a functional officer. And, you know, years ago, those class sizes were eight, ten, twelve, and now we're at twenty-three, twenty-four, because we've seen higher numbers of people leaving, and we're having higher numbers of people in a diff, in one of the three different training statuses that we have. So, you know, right now, we have forty-five or so people in a training status because we've had higher, higher turnover, certainly this year, and, and in years before, it's been elevated.
So Chief, how, what, what does it say to us, looking at these, you know, soon-to-be officers, based on the scenario that the county manager explained, that we are looking to, to a force of two hundred and eighty, you know, sixty or more down from where it should be? So what should we do to retain already them, like, kind of, kind of preventively, to, to make sure that they come into the force and they stay?
I, I think it's a multi-step conversation. I think, you know, you know, monetary is showing the appreciation for their work. I think there's things inside that it's important to me to have a scenario where, you know, it's a reasonable work-life balance, we're not over-demanding, have different career paths, that's really big for new officers, have opportunities to do different things. And as my numbers shrink, my ability to let people go be a detective, or do own plain clothes, or be promoted to supervisor, that goes away too. So it's a self-eating problem. As the numbers go down, the ability to do different things goes down. But I still think it's important, and we are working on creating career pathing for non-supervisors. How do we manage expectations with the community on what we can do and what we can't do, and maybe roll back some of the things we take reports for? The, the goal being that we continue to provide the core services and provide them at a very exceptional level, but where can we find space to balance the workload, balance the ability for officers, like the manager was talking about, to make a difference in the community, to really enjoy coming to work and not go call to call to call, or spend eight hours sitting with somebody? So I, I think it's, there's a lot of pieces to this puzzle, and I think this is the first part. And we've begun having conversations in the department about career pathing and, and what, what are we going to do for the next couple of months, and what are we going to do for the winter, spring?
Thank you. Of course, I'm supportive of the, of the proposal right now. The only thing is that I am also mindful that.
Thank you.
We need to find the other pieces of the solution, or, or, you know, align the other pieces of the solution that gets us to hire the appropriate staff sooner rather than later. And I don't know how soon this should be. I believe that, you know, in the case of the, of our mental health response, it's So we don't have any time there. I think that this is a really critical problem. I mean, I'm not saying, Chief, that police service is not critical, I'm just saying that I am kind of appalled when fifty percent of appropriate, you know, response force is not present. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Karantounas. Forty-six is the number you said to Chief Penn. Mr. Dorsey.
Thank you. So Chief Penn, I'm, I'm reading a book now by Rosa Brooks, an academic who spent some time with the Metropolitan Police Department, is one of their volunteer sworn officers. And with all apologies, I haven't read any studies of that program to know whether it's been deemed effective, or if you have an opinion of it. But at least from her first-person account, it seems like a program such as that, which, for the benefit of everyone else, they actually put people through the same training that they do sworn officers, and ultimately treat them as sworn officers with the primary difference that they don't pay them a dime. And so I was wondering if that was something that you had looked into either as a replica model, or something that you could, you know, copy as a hybrid to solve, not all of your issues, but some of the issues in terms of, you know, overtaxing individual officers, keeping them in one-duty area, having to have them do things that are not their calling for policing, as part of their regular routine. It seems like maybe having other folks who could, who could do that while still upholding a level of training and excellence could help. Won't help tomorrow, but long-term.
No, we do have an auxiliary program of auxiliary officers, and I think that's one of the things, you know, we use auxiliaries, we use interns, we're one of the very few police departments that have interns following up on some of the criminal investigations, the lower-level things. I mean, I think we are looking for every way we can to balance the workload, provide the service at the highest level we can, but have a balance to where, you know, we have the opportunity to make the difference in the community, to be engaged in things and not call to call to call. So I've not read that book, but I am interested in it. I think, you know, we've tried to step outside the box, do different things. Somebody had mentioned colleges. We do, we actually partner with about twenty-five colleges and send our staff back to our alumni, send them back there, and, you know, not just when people are graduating, but for two or three years, to build the relationship, to try to draw people to Arlington. Because the, the seemingly truth is, the number of people interested in a career in law enforcement right now, today, is much smaller pool than it used to be. So we have to be much more aggressive to go find the people that meet the standards that we want in Arlington and actively recruit court, whatever.
Well, I'm almost finished, so I'll drop it by when I'm done. It's called Tangled Up in Blue. Interesting. And maybe talk to your police colleagues from the district about their program, because it's her, it's her first-person account, but I find it fascinating, so.
Tangled up in blue?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Dorsey and, and Chief Penn. So the question, I guess, for Mr. Schwartz, I mean, is, Coach is through, you know, you're asking for three.
So, right. So what I normally would do is I'd say, you know, make a motion, vote to allocate three million dollars to be spent in the following way. The problem is, I haven't got the following way figured out exactly yet. So hearing from you that you're all supportive of generally, I may not need the full amount, but I, I will come back to you with a refined, fully fleshed-out proposal. I know that Anita and Deborah and Andy have been, I think you had a couple of meetings today before you came here, just, just on this. I'll be back to you with some very specifics. The point is, I just wanted to signal to the workforce and the people involved in this that we have your support. The final contours of the plan are no small feat, and we will come back to you, maybe even before the next board meeting, and ask you to bless the specific plan. But I just wanted to know that at least I had your support for the concept and the allocation, generally, before you even, I'm not asking you to vote on anything specific right now.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Mr. Chair, I move that we nod our heads.
Exactly. I was trying to figure out whether it was, it's not, you raised it, so it's not direction to the manager, it's ratifying the direction you're already headed. As far as communications, I suspect there'll be a few officers and a few mental health leaders who are paying attention to this moment. And so I'll ask just that you also, Coach, if there's anything communications-wise that this board needs to do in addition. We're fully with you, Mr. Schwartz, Chief Penn, on, on moving forward with this. And also, Ms. Friedman and Ms. Warren, I really think you summed it up with a powerful sentence. Ms. Friedman, if we don't do this, we can't afford not to do this. So thank you, Mr. Schwartz, for bringing it forward. We'll want to understand the fiscal details and be responsible, but first, let's move forward and address this. There's a through line between our police department and our mental health services, and that's, with respect to staffing, that's what we have to move quickly, and the board is ready to do that with you, Mr. Schwartz.
I, I thank the board. I know that we're, you know, we sometime lose sight of this. This problem is happening everywhere right now in Virginia, everywhere. And I feel we have more of the tools, and certainly the will here, to do what we can to try to stave what have really, really been a tide that's been lapping at the dyke, to, to use that. So I want to thank everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz, and thank you, Chief Penn, Ms. Friedman, and Ms. Warren, and most importantly, all the folks who are working with and for you that are trying to help us.
So, Mr. Chair, what I want to do now is hearken back when Mr. Dorsey was chair in 2019, the extent of our existential dilemmas and angst was over the fight of our lifetime, which was to have a complete census. And it was, and it still is. And Elizabeth Hardy is here, and Emily Garrett, who's been working for the county for about two years, but you may never have met, is also here with Elizabeth, works in the same unit. They're here to give you an update on the initial results from the 2020 census. And as you know, we had a complete count committee, and they worked tirelessly, and, you know, we had an enumeration rate of ninety-nine point nine-eight percent. And I think I'm going to be digging both Elizabeth and Emily on their performance appraisal for missing that final point zero-two percent. But I'm going to turn it over to Elizabeth and Emily for a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Schwartz. Before you get started, you've been patient, and as far as the order of this, and just a, a thank you for bearing with us, you may have other things after 6:30 that you wanted most to be doing. So go ahead. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for having us here tonight. We are excited because this is a once every ten years thing that we get. We get census data. So we're here tonight to talk about redistricting data that has been released, if I can get this to go. Okay. So in August, the Census Bureau started to release 2020 census data that started with the PL file, that's Public Law File 94171. And that is a file that's mandated for the Census Bureau to release data for the redistricting purposes to small-level geographies. And included in that file is total population, population by race, population by age, eighteen years and over, group quarters population, housing units, and housing vacancy. The Census Bureau is mandated to release that one year after Census Day, which, as you may recall, is April 1st. So it was April 1st, 2020, a little delayed for, for a couple of reasons. One, being the pandemic. You might recall that the stay-at-home orders were issued pretty much the same week that the census came out and asking people to participate. Good thing that this time around, it was online, so it made it a lot easier for people to participate. But the census was extended to, to make sure that they got everyone counted. So it was supposed to end at the end of July, and it went to October 15th, which is, is kind of far from April 1st, which is Census Day, and that's the day where, you know, you count where you are. It led to some headaches with group quarters population, because a lot of kids came home from college and, and their school and were, were with mom and dad. But they should have been counted at their college and university. So there are some discrepancies with the data in terms of group quarters, but as we go through and do our analysis, we will be looking for that. Now, you might say Arlington doesn't have a lot of group quarters, but there are a lot of families, and they could have come home and stayed with, with their, their parents, and they could have been counted there instead of away at school. Another issue that has led to the delay is differential privacy. And you might have heard this at, at Northern Virginia Regional Commission meetings. We are working with fellow Northern Virgin demographers, trying to get a handle on this issue. Essentially, what it is, is that with the rise of computing, the rise of open data, information out there for public consumption, when you combine it with census data, there are opportunities to identify individuals. And that's a very serious thing for the Census Bureau, because, you know, the Census Bureau takes the privacy and security as one of their foundations. As you might recall, that, you know, data cannot be released for seventy-two years. So the new methodology used this time around to protect people's information is called differential privacy. And it's essentially adding noise to data that's at the sub-state level. And as you go down in your geography, so you start the state, that's a big geography, go down to county, tract, block group, and then block, the smaller the geography, the less accurate the data is. So we're working with our Northern Virginia colleagues to understand what is this impact? How do we deal with it? How can we use, use the data for those small-level geographies? And it's really, it's a hard concept to get and understand with. So this is an example that the University of Virginia, Walden Cooper. with. So this is an example that the University of Virginia, Weldon Cooper Center, came out with. In one of their blog posts, they said, you know, with, in areas that had black minority areas, which are localities that were less than 2% of the population identified as black in 2010, those areas showed an average of 74% growth in the black population. Then if you look at black majority areas, those showed an average of 6% decrease in the black population. And what this is, is this is not a result of actual population shifts, but the, this is a result of the algorithm that has been applied to keep people's information So with that, we have a population total of 238,643 in 2020. That is an increase of over 31,000 persons since 2010. If we look at our growth for the last 10 years, we grew by 14.9%, which is over double that of the, of the national growth rate of 7.1. And I know you have heard me say before that since the 1980, we have grown at a rate of 1% per year. This past 10 years shows we have grown at about 1.5%. So we had a higher growth rate over these past 10 years. Arlington's population increase accounts for, accounts for 4.9% of Virginia's growth and accounts for 9.7% of growth of Northern Virginia. There were also some changes to the race and Hispanic or Latino origin question that can lead to changes in the data as well. The Census Bureau had changed the design and processing of this data. So in this statement from them, they say they're confident that the overall racial distributions are largely due to their changes in the questions and to their processing. But there are also some demographic changes that went on as well. I just want to review very quickly what those changes of the questions were. So this is the Hispanic origins question, and the changes was to that last checkbox. And they took out the word print origin. They took out the word origin, for example. They found that that word origin was very confusing to people. So they just said print, for example. And they got a whole lot more responses that way. They also changed the, the, the six categories in that response to reflect changes in the Hispanic populations. If we look at the race question, there were about seven changes that occur, occurred to this question. Number one, they wanted participants to mark one race and print their origins. And this was the first time you could print your origin if you were of white or black African American categories. They also provided six groups of, of white, black, or African American, American Indian, and Alaskan Native categories based on the largest populations in the country. The other thing was changed was the word negro was removed from the black or African American category. The Asian Hawaii, Asian and Native Hawaiian or other Pacific Islanders were reordered based on population size. Guamanian or Shamaro was changed to Shamaro. And then they also changed instructions on the some other race to say print race or origin to align with the overall instructions. They changed, the Census Bureau changed how they coded race as well. So previously, the number of characters that you could put in the write-in was 30. That's up to 200 now. And they also coded the responses for six codes. So this is, this is, this graphic here is to, to help me explain what this means. Before, in 2010, that you could have up to two different codes for your race. Now you can have up to six. So if you see, start at the top, someone who responded they were black, they have one code. White Hispanic, Black code, they have three codes, and it goes down. So you could have up to six this time. And this leads to our results by race. If we look at the white population, we came in at 58.9% white. And this is the, the lowest that the white population has, has ever been in Arlington, meaning conversely that the non-white population is the highest it's ever been in Arlington. So after the white population, the second highest is, are those of Hispanic or Latino origin at 15.7%, followed by the Asian population at 11.4, and then the black or African American population at 8.5. And if we look at the growth over the last 10 years, I'm just going to go down this list and just highlight some things. The white population grew by 5%. That is only higher than the populations that declined. The American Indian, Alaskan Native declined, and also Native Hawaiian or other Pacific Islander declined. However, since they are such small populations, I'm not sure if this is an actual decline of the population or differential privacy induced decline. If we look at the black or African American population, that increased by 19, 19%. That's the first time that this population has increased since 1980. If we look at the Asian population, they had the overall highest number of people increase, increasing by over 7,000 and almost 38%. Those of some other race or two or more races had substantial increases over double. And I think this is due to the fact of the form changes that we saw. And then those of Hispanic or Latino origin increased by 19.1%. If you may recall, from 2020 to 2010, we had a huge decrease in the Hispanic population. But now we're up and over the levels that we were in, in 2000. So I'm going to hand it over to Emily to talk about age.
Great. So as Elizabeth mentioned, this data release included population age 18 years and older. We were able to subtract the population 18 years and older from the total population to get the population under 18 years old, which is 42,080 people countywide. This age group grew by 9,454 persons or a 29% increase since 2010. Arlington's population under the age of 18 years old had the largest increase in both number and growth rate since 1950 to 1960. But the total is still lower than the peak of 48,995 reported in the 1960 census. The percent of the population under 18 increased from 15.7% of the population in the 2010 census to 17.6% of the population in 2020. As you can see, the percent of population under 18 varies by race and ethnicity. The populations that I have identified as some other race, two or more races, or of Hispanic or Latino origin, have much higher percentages of persons under the age of 18. Native Hawaiian or other Pacific Islander, Asian, and white have the lowest percentage of persons under the age of 18. Overall, Arlington's population under the age of 18 grew twice as fast as the population 18 years and over. When broken down for each race, in those of Hispanic origin, only white population and those of Hispanic or Latino origin show the same trend. The growth in the white population under the age of 18 was over six times that of the white population 18 years and over. Those of Hispanic or Latino origin under the age of 18 grew twice as fast as those 18 years and over. The Asians, some other race, and those of two or more races had higher growth rates for the population 18 years and over compared to those under 18 years. In particular, the 18 years and over population that identified as some other race grew over twice as fast as the under 18 years population. The black and African American population under 18 years grew at a rate of 18.6%. This is very close to the 18 years and over growth rate of 19% and can be considered to grow at the same rate. The American Indian or Alaskan Native population are the smallest racial groups in Arlington, and when broken down by age, a slight change will result in a significant percentage change. In addition, the implementation of differential privacy can skew results for small populations, and it is difficult to determine if the change was statistically significant for these racial populations. The Census Bureau classifies all people not living in housing units as living in group quarters. A group quarters is a place where people live or stay in a group living arrangement that is owned or managed by an entity or organization providing housing and/or services for its residents. From 2010 to 2020, Arlington's group quarters population increased by 94 persons from 2,892 in 2010 to 2,986 in 2020. For this census, the incarcerated population was counted differently. Instead of being counted in the location where they are incarcerated, they were counted where they lived prior to being incarcerated. The 2020 census reports Arlington to have 119,085 housing units, which is an increase of 13,681 units since 2010. Housing units are invariant and are not impacted by differential On the other hand, characteristics pertaining to housing such as vacancy and occupancy are impacted by differential privacy. Because of this, these numbers are preliminary and are subject to change upon the release of the detailed demographic and housing characteristic files to be released by the Census Bureau in 2022. A household is an occupied housing unit. Every person living in that housing unit is considered part of the same household. Arlington households well surpassed the 100,000 mark in the 2020 census, reaching 109,912. Over the last decade, 11,862 households were added to Arlington, the largest amount since the 1970 census. Arlington's average household size, or the number of people per household, has been between 2.07 and 2.12 since the 1980 census. The 2020 census reported a 2.14 average household size, increasing by 2.7% since 2010, and only the second time Arlington's average household size increased in its history. Here you can see our next steps. We will do a block level review comparing household units, total population, population by race, population by age, and average household size to the 2010 census results. We will also use the 2020 census data to evaluate and update our methodologies, including population estimates and the population forecast. And additionally, we will put together various data resources, including census tabulation tables for specific areas, including planning areas and civic associations, a series of briefing papers, and an interactive dashboard. In the meantime, two demographic dashboards are available online at arlingtonva.us/demographics. These dashboards utilize American Community Survey data and show various demographics countywide and by census tract.
Thank you both. Welcome. Although you've been here for a little while, Ms. Garrett.
Thank you.
And I, I'm guessing we'll have at least one comment that is positive and so thankful for all that has been done. I'm sort of trying to, I think Ms. Crystal, having been the co-chair, but I think it's wise that the point O2 that is not counted is not deducted or accounted with respect to your great work for us. Thank you, is the, the big thought. And certainly, I think I've sent one note hoping for age data, and I know that is going to come in due course down the road in 2022. But on behalf of all of us, a big thanks. If there's anything you wanted to add, after getting through a very helpful slide deck, we will want the slide deck in addition to going to, to those two sites. That would be great. But a big thank you for all the work and the patience this afternoon.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I'm going to present, I, I know Elizabeth won't like this, but, you know, Bryna wore, had this on her car for a year, and we're going to give this to Elizabeth. Also, along with the, people wonder what happens to county board proclamations from the chair, but it's Dr. Dorsey's proclamation, so.
Well deserved. And thank you, Ms. Helfer, for adding that to perhaps the room that Ms. Hardy, or a room in Ms. Hardy's house, but, or here. Thank you both very much. Really appreciate it. And we'll take a look, and we will probably have additional questions, you know.
Thank you very much.
Sure. Thank you.
Last, last item, and certainly not least, but I want to thank Dr. Miller and Dr. Vargese for waiting. We have an update. I know that was, July was the last time that we actually did an update to the community, and that a lot has happened in the area of COVID. And I think that both Aaron and Ruben are going to walk through sort of a quick summary of where we stand on issues, and then I'm sure you'll have some questions. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Vargese to start.
Dr. Vargese.
I think it's now appropriate to say good evening rather than.
That's right. Good evening, not good afternoon, and we're sorry for that. Go ahead.
No, no, thank you. And I'm going to ask Ms. Jacobs indulgence to pull up the familiar PowerPoint slide of the pandemic curve. I think I can start even without that up, but there it is. So I don't think it surprises anyone that I'm going to say that pandemic continues, and we are at high COVID transmission in Arlington and region and the state, and truth be told, in the entire nation. And so just to reorient everyone to the picture in the audience, this goes back to essentially March 2020, when the pandemic really began for Arlington. And obviously, in April and May of 2020 was the first peak, which we suffered through and unfortunately saw the most deaths occurring at that time. And we couldn't imagine something more awful. Unfortunately, we had the second peak coming in December and January. Fortunately, fewer deaths, but that, you know, isn't very comforting. Had a lot of disease in the community. And as things improved and hoped that the vaccine would actually change the situation, we did see improvement. But I think it is another thing to remind everyone that vaccine, while it's an important element in the strategies, it's not the cure-all. I think some people have gotten the mistaken impression that breakthrough infections was something unanticipated. And in fact, when the FDA originally approved the vaccines, the entire purpose was to reduce the risk for severe illness manifested by hospitalization and death. And from that perspective, it has actually been effective for the length of time. They have never said, and the CDC had that very clear, but it wasn't picked up, but they never said that there would be no infections. So I think that is something, but I get it, in common parlance, in common parlance, the public will think of breakthrough as, you know, any sort of infection. So we get it. And it's an important thing, and thank you, Dr. Miller, that we actually remind people that the vaccine can lead, can protect you from severe consequences, although it's not absolute, and you're still at risk for infection. And it's why we continuously talk about in public health that it's more than one strategy to try to reduce this. And I was going to actually ask the website gurus out there, I believe Kara's out there in the background, if you could actually pull up that website a little earlier than I was expecting to, since I made that transition, to our, our slide on the web on the Swiss cheese model. I just wanted to make sure that people see what we're talking about. So this is a new graphic that staff created about reminding people, modification of Dr. McKay's work on the Swiss cheese model. And it basically says, use many strategies to slow the spread of COVID-19. Because the entire purpose of this is showing that no single strategy, no single Swiss cheese layer is perfect at preventing the spread of COVID-19. Each strategy has weaknesses or holes. However, the more you use together, overlapping layers blocks holes more and reduces how much COVID-19 may get through to you or to other people. And so obviously, it's going to be my pitch, I'm going to put the health hat on right now. The more individuals who can do as many of these layers as possible, you're protecting yourself, you're protecting other people. And I know we want to return to normal. The way to return to more of normal is to allow more activities to occur, such as schools. Schools will remain open if there's less disease going into the schools. And that only happens if there's less disease in the community. So that is my fervent hope, is that people will try to do as best as they can to do as many of these layers all the time as individuals to reduce that so that we actually can keep all of the essential things we need to do open in our community. And that's just something, and I think we've done that, and there's more to go. I think with that sermon there, I would like to go to the vaccine slide, the actual progress, so that I can review some of the good news first before I deliver some of the sobering other context. So we've made progress. We're at 78% vaccination with at least one dose in Arlington. And you know that a while back, that wasn't as high. And I suspect that the number is even higher. While we've gotten the Maryland data, that didn't give us enough of a bump. The CDC had told us. The CDC had told us that roughly there could be 14,000 dead points between Maryland and DC. We only got about 500 from the bump, so I'm putting out all hope that there's more of a bump from the DC District of Columbia data. The state of Virginia and the District of Columbia are working through the legal agreements to share data. This is happening across the nation. So I'm hoping it'll be better than this, but I've, this is still pretty good. And so please don't get me wrong, I'm pleased overall. However, at this rate, though, among the eligible, we still have 22% of our population of adults who are unvaccinated. So while this is good, and we have 162,000 people who are vaccinated either fully or partially, that still leaves 45,000 people who are unvaccinated. So I think we have to sometimes remember percentages are great, but sometimes it's the magnitude of how many people still are out there that can, and from my concern, they're at higher risk than the vaccinated for infection, serious illness, hospitalization, and death. And I think that's the thing, how do we help people realize that risk is still there? And then, of course, it does impact our community. But I'm going to still talk about, we can't hector people, it's a trust issue sometimes. And if we force it too much, we may win the battle, but lose the war. And you had earlier talked about building trust in communities and someone. How do you have that right balance? So I'm very grateful to Bryna Helfer and the team that's been leading the CVC activities to try to keep this issue out in the forefront. And every week, we are seeing more vaccination. It may not be at the level that people would love to see in getting to 100%, but I think we have to realize we have plenty of vaccine. We have over 30 sites in Arlington in a 26-square-mile jurisdiction. I'm going to have a hard time believing physical access is the primary issue, but we know there could be functional issues like computer access, fear. But what I want to remind people is, the vaccine is there. If the people listening who are vaccinated can convince other people in their lives who may not be, that's the likely best way to get that conversion to happen. Because it's not going to be me as a trusted agent or any of you ultimately, it is going to be the people most proximate to them. And that's why the more we can get the message out that the vaccine is safe, it actually prevents serious outcomes like hospitalization and death, that's very critical. And try to be gentle with people. I realize it can be frustrating, and I'm not saying I don't get frustrated as well. I would like this to go away and that you never see me for about four to six years. So, but I think that's one of the things that, how do we do that message? And so just to remind people, I think we've gotten to the enthusiasts. I've been telling people I'm roughly going for 84%. Where did I get that number? National data suggests that it could be up to 16% of the population who will never get the vaccine. I'd like to believe Arlington's better than that, but for the moment, let's start there. That would be an 84% of our eligible population could get it. We're actually not that far away. So we need to keep being steady. I'm not giving up on the 16, but we have to have incremental progress here. So I'm holding out hope, hopefully for folks, that I think we see hope here, and we just need to be consistently getting the message out and inviting people routinely to the opportunity to get vaccinated. I think I've said enough, so I'm going to let Dr. Miller.
Sure. Wanted to go to Dr. Miller, but if we can leave this page up, I think I'll have a question eventually on that, but, and maybe I'll just ask it now. The 22% DC and Maryland are pieces, but the federal employees who may not yet be counted, is it, am I guessing correctly that in that 22%, there's some percentage, perhaps more than 1%, but we don't know how big, that has been vaccinated, but is still in the gray? Is that the right conclusion or not?
I think it's the right conclusion. What we don't know, though, is how much of the 14,000. We have not, we don't get really much information about the federal doses. We heard about Maryland and the district, which are different from necessarily the federal doses. So there's some degree of possibility, and they're trying to do agency by agency. I'm not sure why that has to happen that way, but if anyone can convince the federal government to tell all of their agencies, "You must share the data," that would be very helpful. But they also, there are data quality issues. And Portsmouth was trying to find out what its rate was because of the historic nature of where they are. For a lot of people who are stationed there but have not been there for years, and suddenly the population of vaccinated was greater than the actual number of people in the community. So that's why we have to look at the data to make sure that it actually is telling us what it needs. But that's why we're trying to work with the state. They're working gently to get that data as quickly as possible. So I'm holding out hope we'll see a bit more of a bump. I just can't tell you how much.
Thank you. That's helpful. Dr. Miller?
One of the key components that Dr. Varghese mentioned as part of the Swiss cheese model and that you've heard us talk about since the beginning of the pandemic has been testing, right? And so I wanted to just briefly provide an update on that, and then a refresher for those listening at home. So as a reminder, there are three main types of tests administered for detection of COVID: antibody tests, antigen tests, and what we call a diagnostic or in vitro, or sometimes maybe referred to as a PCR test. Those three types of tests are designed to do very different things. The antibody test is designed to detect levels of antibodies in your immune system. It does not detect active infection. Antigen tests are designed to test for a specific protein in your blood, excuse me, or in the body that is a reaction created by your immune system and does detect active infection. And then again, what we refer to as the gold standard, the PCR test, generally sent to a lab. Throughout the pandemic, through Monday, we've had about 333,800 PCR tests reported to the Virginia Department of Health in Arlington County. Arlington County sites have provided about 84,500 of those tests. Some are between 20 and 25%, which is where we've hovered for the majority of the pandemic. We have, since the beginning of September, seen what I would consider to be a record demand on our PCR testing sites. At the beginning of September, we were seeing almost 2,000 tests a day administered across Arlington, which is higher than we had seen at any time in the pandemic. We attribute that to, one, the return to school, two, the end of summer travel, and then some increases within local and state requirements for either proof of vaccination or a negative test to attend, for instance, events in the District of Columbia or per employer requests, as we see those mandates going in. Arlington still maintains three sites open to the public. Those are at Virginia Highlands Park, in the Courthouse Plaza parking lot, and at Arlington Mill Community Center. Those are open still 11:00 AM to 7:00 PM every day of the week. No appointment is necessary. However, it is encouraged, easily, easy to make online or by calling our COVID hotline, which can still help direct you through that process. No insurance is necessary at those sites, as a reminder, and no doctor's referral is necessary. They are PCR tests administered at that site, so they are not same-day results. I am glad to say, though, that we are seeing about 36-hour turnaround. I used one on, what is this, two Saturdays ago. I actually visited the Arlington Mill site with my family. Everybody in the family, brother-in-law, sister-in-law visiting from New Orleans, kids, everybody, two-year-old with the PCR test, always an adventure, received ours in about 36 hours. And my thanks, as always, to the public health staff and the other staff members who continue to work to support that access for our community. The Virginia Highlands site was out of commission from September 17th. Tomorrow morning, it comes back online. It suffered some storm damage, and as a result, we didn't want to have staff in the, at the site. We wanted to make the necessary repairs and make sure it was safe. So that comes back online tomorrow, tomorrow morning, so we wanted the community to know that. Test positivity rate, as Dr. Varghese mentioned, we do see an increase there. Still not a record highs, hovers around 3.3%, 3.5% for the last 90-day period, and the last week period, I think, is somewhere around, refresh my memory, somewhere hovering between 3.5% and 4%. Numbers are escaping me right now, which is indicative, as Dr. Varghese mentioned, of considerable amounts of community spread and higher than what we saw at some of the lowest points in the plateaus. So still a reminder that if you wake up and have a cough that you don't normally have, right, as part of your allergies, if you've got the sniffles, if your daughter, who is in school, who is going to probably get sick, comes home with the sniffles, you should avail yourself of the available testing options. They are free, they're easy to access, we have language access there onsite to help with folks. We want you to be able to know your status, protect yourselves, your family, and your community. It is an important part, even if you are vaccinated, because there are others in your life that may not be vaccinated, and as Dr. Varghese mentioned, you still have the ability to get sick, and we don't want folks unknowingly to be walking around sick. So, thank you.
Thank you for that report as well. Open to questions. I'm mindful of time. I do, you know, just want to, there's a couple of different, maybe I have two big-picture questions, if colleagues will indulge. And then I would say that amidst the challenge of Delta, we have just looked up again, we have, we have hospitalizations, but we're seeing various, we're not losing as many Arlingtonians, you know, maybe three or four over the last, any is too many, but three or four over the last 90 days. But is there a way to succinctly describe sort of, we don't know yet on five-to-11-year-olds, that process is ongoing, and we, the same is true for a more robust, for our seniors? Can you speak to those two issues kind of briefly as far as boosters? Because I know there's folks interested, but just wanted to touch on those very briefly.
Okay. No, excellent questions. So I'll take the five-to-11 category. The best we know right now is that Pfizer is getting ready to provide their data to the FDA, the publicly available information of the media. The expectation is that should be submitted sometime by the end of September, which means that the FDA has to pull its advisors together to review things. And what we understand about their process, just to reassure everyone else as well, is they are going to pull more people off of other approvals so that they can fast-track the review of the material. So it is not that they are rushing the review, but that does mean, in a sense, some people may say the pipeline for other medications and vaccines may not move as quickly because they are actually shifting staff to review this so that they can say they've crossed every T and, crossed every I, is, dotted every I. I'm cross-eyed, apparently. So, so that they can actually reassure the public, one, process had been maintained, as well as, given that it's about children, I've said it before, we apply even stricter standards for making sure the vaccine is safe for children. And this is not a COVID-related phenomenon. This has been true for any vaccine prior for children. So if that happens, hopefully, it'll be approved by the end of October. But that's one of the things that we've always been very bad at, is how to predict what's actually going to happen. All of it's the timing of whatever information happens, and that would be Pfizer. And then we don't know when companies like Moderna and Johnson &amp; Johnson may be submitting those things, because they are trying to cross their Ts and dot their Is. And so I know a number of people are frustrated, but we know that there have been some adverse events or side effects, like with young men having some more indications of myocarditis, heart inflammation, that went away. So how do you balance it so that we go to that trust issue that people know that the process was maintained, and it's as safe as we can say it is for the public? So there's that. The FDA did, panel did recommend having certain groups get the possibility of boosters, and that was those over 65 and those with underlying chronic medical conditions, those 16 and older, for the Pfizer product. The FDA has not come out yet and said that they're going to approve that, or anticipating they'll make a decision sometime this week. If that happens, it'll then go to the CDC and their advisory group to say, you know, which populations would they officially consider? If that all happens, then the group that had originally gotten Pfizer would be eligible for those things. And the fortunate thing is a number of the folks who got, the elderly who got the initial vaccine, especially nursing homes, was more likely to be Pfizer than not. So that could be an option. What we'll also have to see is, will CDC say, in the cases of those who are eligible under the general criteria of over 65, will they say it's acceptable for a person who got Moderna to also get Pfizer? I can't predict that right now, and I realize people are probably waiting for that. There are pros and cons to those things, and so that's why they have to weigh through that, and let's see what the experts actually show, or say. But I want to remind everyone, it's not like suddenly the immunity turns off. And so we are, in one sense, this may not be the best analogy, but we've been building the plane as we're flying it, there was no choice. It's safe, but we don't know how long the immunity lasts, and there's only one way we're going to learn that, over the passage of time.
Thank you. That's very helpful. And big questions on, you'll be waiting, and Virginia Department of Health, and then we will wait on seniors till the CDC acts. FDA has act, but we need the CDC too. So those are two big categories. I know it's a continuing source of concern. We continue to work our way through this difficult challenge. Thank you both for waiting, for being here this afternoon, and for providing us the update. Unless there are burning questions from colleagues, we will, yes, Ms. Dorsey?
Just a quick one. Dr. Varghese, are you getting any sense of whether or not we're seeing the normal uptake for flu vaccinations this year? And should we take this as an opportunity to do as you so ably do, to always remind people to not forget about that upper respiratory ailment as we're dealing with COVID?
Thank you for that terrific segue and opportunity. Yes, we still believe that flu shots are going to be critical this year as well, and especially as people are interacting. So, one, make sure you make the opportunity to get your flu shot. They are already starting to arrive, and so there should be ample supply. And for those who are concerned, you can, the CDC has said you can get both the coronavirus vaccine and the flu shot at the same time, so you don't need to delay things. So you do not want to get COVID, you do not want to get flu, you do not want to get both of them, okay? So please get vaccinated, and all those other layers will also help reduce the risk from flu.
Oops. Thank you very much. With that, we wish you both a good evening, and we will, I'll go ahead and move, colleagues, a little out of order, but want to get to closed session so we can have a little nourishment as well. So I will, what's that? Yeah, and we'll finish the appointments after, if that's okay. I moved that the county board convene a closed meeting is authorized by Virginia Code Sections 2.2-3711A57 and 8 for discussion concerning prospective business where no previous announcement has been made of the business's interest in locating its facilities in the community, and consultation with the acting county attorney pertaining to case number CL21-1252 pending in the Arlington County Circuit Court, and consultation with the acting county attorney regarding the legal impacts of approving requested vacations of certain stormwater easements belonging to the county, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. That motion passes 5-0. We are in closed session. We'll come out and certify afterwards, but we're in closed session now. We are, just for colleagues.
session, one, only lawfully, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under Chapter 37, Title 2.2 of the Code of Virginia, were discussed, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered by the board. Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Do we have to call the roll?
Oh, we do have to call the roll. Thank you, Ms. Garvey. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Mr. De Ferenti.
Aye.
Ms. Crystal.
Aye.
Ms. Garvey.
Aye.
Mr. Dorsey.
Yes.
Mr. Carrington.
Thank you. I have a motion, based on, a motion, I move that the county board authorize the settlement of $50,000 in the personal injury action of Rhonda Lawhorn, now pending in the Arlington Circuit Court, case number CL 21-1252, and authorize the acting county attorney or her designee to sign any documents to effectuate this settlement. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, no. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, colleagues. While we're on a roll, without objection, I'll just go straight to the appointments. This doesn't need a second, but I will read through, I have a number of appointments that we will make. I move that the county board appoint to the Arts Commission-